Good evening and welcome to the Eastlime Board of Education meeting for February 3rd, 2020. This is a regularly scheduled meeting. I will call the meeting to order, and for everyone who can rise, please rise and join myself and James Good on the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. So, first item that we have on the agenda is a recognition.
Absolutely. You know, it's really a pleasure and an honor. I'm not going to steal Lily B. Haynes' thunder, so I'm going to turn it over to Melissa and Janet. But I just want to say that, you know, we're in the midst of somebody who I have the highest and utmost respect for in James Good. And James, thank you for being with us tonight, and it's an honor to be sitting here and recognizing you this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to these two individuals to share in what that's all about. Or Melissa doesn't have a voice, really, so. Thank you, Janet, for stepping in.
Thanks, Janet. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of Melissa De La Roca, the head librarian for me, and I'm still here. So, these are her words. When I heard we were going to continue our Viking Valor Award recognitions, I immediately thought of Mr. James Good. James has been the head custodian at Lily B. Haynes for five years, and prior to this supervisory role, James was a custodian in Eastlime since 2001. When I first arrived at Lily B. Haynes four years ago and met James, I immediately knew that he was different. Different in a great way. His work ethic, his attention to detail, his perseverance, dedication, organization, follow-through, and overall commitment to his position is truly admirable. In all that James does, it is evident he considers Lily B. his home away from home and takes pride in the building's innermost workings and appearance. James has always been instrumental in ensuring the physical environment looks appealing and the facilities are running properly. However, James' skill and true devotion rose to the top during the Lily B. Haynes Building Alteration Project. I cannot do justice with words regarding all that James did during the past two years because I know I would leave out so many things. But what I can say is James played a fundamental part in assuring the success of the project. He was always available, helpful to everyone, ONG, the contractors, the staff, the students, and of course, Melissa. I don't know what I would have done without James during the past two years, and I want him and all of you here to know how truly incredible he was and still is, and how thankful I am to have him as a colleague at Lily B. Haynes. The staff wants to provide James with the recognition that he deserves, which comes from the heart of the people he works with.
James? James? Oh.
Who is James Good? He is a man of many talents and much patience. Who else would be able to put up with talking to kindergarten boys about the importance of aim? Or would repeatedly snake the same drains to avoid flooding hallways and ensure working water fountains and flushing potties? He is a man who is brave enough to have given his personal cellphone number to 20-plus women, many who want what they want when they want it. He is a man who managed a construction project and summer cleaning job and got it all done before school began. Thank you, James, for your continued support that you give to the faculty, staff, and families of Lily B. Haynes School. We love and appreciate you.
Okay, I see. Okay, got it.
A is for amazing. Mr. James Good is an invaluable member of our Haynes community for so many reasons. He has an amazingly strong work ethic. He is able to multitask, and he will do whatever he can to support the students and the staff at Lily B. Haynes. His ability to manage the maintenance of the building was most evident during our renovations. James managed to keep the timeline of the move-on schedule. He supported and organized the packing and unpacking and packing and unpacking and probably packing and unpacking again of multiples of classrooms, multitudes of classrooms, and ensured that every classroom had what we needed to keep instruction from being impacted. Even after the move, James continued to facilitate the smooth transition to new classrooms. So many times, James would be asked, "Can you tell me where, insert any item, is so I can get it for a lesson?" Within minutes, James would have the desired item delivered to the classroom so teachers could focus on lessons. It is truly impressive how James is able to support so many staff members and students and simultaneously be on top of everything that is going on in the building. We are so grateful for James and his commitment to our school. Thank you.
M stands for multitasker. Working with James as the head custodian means that when something needs to be done, he will make sure it is done in a timely manner. Throughout the multiple moves, he informed us on when our rooms would be ready and what we should do in order to make it easier for everyone involved. The minute you contact James, he responds immediately, and you know whatever you need help with, he will be there for you. This year, all we have to do is text him the word "brrr," and he's in our rooms fixing the heating issues. James is such a hard-working person, and we are so lucky to have him as part of our Lily B. Haynes family.
E is for exceptional. Exceptional is defined as unusually good or outstanding. That is exactly what James represents to us. He is always available and willing to help in any situation, from a broken pencil sharpener to the rearrangement of a classroom to fixing a leaky sink or even a classroom mess. His professionalism and rapport with staff and students is beyond measure. James is truly exceptional.
S is for supportive. Before James became our head custodian, he was a custodian in our wing. Even then, as is now, anytime that we asked for something, somehow it always got done, no matter how small it might have been seemed. "James, can you come to my room? There's a mouse dragging a trap." "James, there's a hole in my window." To "James, a ceiling tire just fell. Can you help me out?" And "James, can you move my desk again?" But even more than that, James has been an integral part of our school community. He teaches PBIS lessons to all male students on bathroom expectations. Some years, he has served as a mentor to individual students whom he would take under his wing and guide them as they did jobs together throughout the school. But we can't stress enough that during the chaos of construction, James helped us feel brief moments of calm. James and his team were there as we packed up one room one day and in less than 24 hours unpacked in another room that needed to be ready for active learning. He really tried to ease some of the stress off of us, and to be honest, he put the stress on himself. Reassuring us that it will all get done. If you could not stay to tell the movers how to get your room set up, he sat with you as he made rough drawings. He would guarantee you all would be good. And you know what? Most of the time, it was. Thank you, James.
Thank you all.
So, there are many more testimonials, and I've got a few that I'm going to read, and there's a few others. Here's the first one. Just the other day, a student was swinging in the motor room. The swing was very noisy. James stuck his head in and asked if I needed him to oil the swing. Both the student and I were extremely grateful. He came back within two minutes and did the job. When I thanked him, he said, "You know I always have your back," and he does. Also, I requested an extra level of cleaning in two motor rooms this year due to medical needs of students. He took this information request very seriously and relayed the information to all of his staff. I am so appreciative of his desire to support me and the student needs. These two scenarios are two of many situations where his prompt response has made the school cleaner, safer, and more comfortable to our Lily B. students. I have another one. Truly, you deserve this Viking Valor recognition. Your dedication and work ethic to Lily B. Haynes community is unparalleled, but it is your smile and friendship that I cherish the most. Thank you for all that you do to keep our children and staff comfortable, clean, and safe. I also appreciated the extra attention and help that you provided to me and my physical education students. This next one's from me. I know, because I wrote a lot. James is a truly remarkable man who is as kind as he is hard-working. I've worked in Eastlime for eight years at the elementary level, and I've seen the custodial staff at each school work in their own ways. While each has their strength, only one school has James. As a music teacher, I've had to rely on James' help on countless occasions, setting up for concerts, fixing instruments, moving gear, et cetera, et cetera. Each time, without fail, James has come through completely and thoroughly. Never one to cut corners, James always gives each task the due diligence it deserves and has never downplayed any issue, big or small. Beyond his work, though, I've always known James to be a kind and thoughtful man who always shows care towards others. Whether talking with an adult or a student, he has a smile on his face and is committed to that person in that moment. Always quick and friendly with a greeting or a light-hearted joke, James is genuinely nice to his core. The qualities that James possesses are the true definition of strong character. James is an admirable man, and is deserving of this recognition and so much more. James, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
We have so much for which we should thank him. His Herculean efforts over the construction period alone were impressive. He seemed to be everywhere, following up on countless details and solving endless problems. Even without the stress of construction, James has to keep so many balls in the air, it's dizzying. We are aware that he has kept this school and its systems going far beyond what one might expect and has come up with solutions to more problems than we know. There is also a kind and fun man behind all the bustle and hustle. He was my secret Santa one year, and he really enjoyed stealthily leaving me surprises while keeping his identity a secret. My surprise when I found that he had been my benefactor was a source of delight to him. Thank you. Thank you, James. We are fortunate in so many ways to have you as part of our school community. Okay, now, this is another one. James has always been courteous and very responsive to any classroom needs that I have specified. He is the ultimate can-do, will-do man. Next testimony. It is so inspiring that James has been recognized by the district for the Viking Valor Award. We have always known him to be an outstanding team member and appreciate him for all he does. For those of you who don't have the privilege to know him, this quote by author Hill Harper describes him perfectly. "Believe in yourself, work hard, work smart, and present your best self to the world." Thank you, James. Next testimony. Before I met James, I had heard of his stellar reputation as custodian. After working with him for just a few months, I quickly learned that he goes above and beyond his custodial duties. He is everywhere and anywhere you need him. If I call him on the walkie-talkie, he is there in a flash. I now know what it's like to work with a superhero custodian. Thank you, James, for all you do. And the next one? James is always ready to step up, whether it's for something that needs a fixing or just a helping hand. Thank you, James.
And I have the last testimony. James is welcoming, helpful, warm, positive, friendly, caring, empathetic, and hard-working. If I look at you, I'm going to crack. These are just a few of the many words that describe James. James has been a support for me in so many ways this year. He has gone beyond his work responsibilities on many occasions to help when I've asked, but even more meaningful when I have not. This is just one demonstration of many, of the care and compassion he has for the people within the school that he takes such good care of. James' perpetual smile and warm greetings are a bright light for students and teachers. In addition, James' hard work and efforts show a genuine care about the aesthetic function and purpose of our building. We are truly blessed to have James taking care of all of us and our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
James, on behalf of the Board of Education, Candace Carlson, myself, Eastlime Public Schools Viking Valor Award presented to you. Head custodian of Lily B. Haynes School. Recognition of exemplary service performed well above and beyond expectations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We would love to have the James Goldenhead.
Okay. Can we hold it closer to our belly?
That's a better.
Put it down at belly level.
Same level.
How are we background?
I don't know.
I have a picture.
This is my daughter and your wife.
Hi, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie.
I need to have feed me so I can continue.
Thank you very much.
Stand up in front of the...
Stand up in front of the...
Okay.
This is more than I needed.
Do you want us to be behind you, James? Doing a dance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Drop and follow along.
Here, we'll go around.
We'll go around.
Come in front of us.
Well, she's the youngest.
You're in the back room.
I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
I will.
You guys can all go.
Thank you so much.
You're on your own.
Thank you.
I will.
There we go.
Basically, I'm just going to create an announcement.
Thank you all.
Basically, I'm just going to read a couple...
Yeah, you just want to read...
I'll be really quick. Yeah. So, we have a math counts club at Eastlime Middle School, and just to give you a little background, we do a kind of a preliminary screening in December. Nationally, there were about 95,000 kids that took the test in December. We ranked 11th in the country as a school. So, the follow-up to that is a competition that we just did, the United States Coast Card Academy this past Saturday. And so, the results, there were 23 schools represented. There were about 200 kids all over from eastern Connecticut. Our team won, has won first place three years in a row. In the individual written test, the students placed first, second, fourth, fifth, seventh, ninth, 10th, 13th, 18th, and 22nd. We had two students with a perfect score, and we had nine students that qualified for the state competition, which will be at University of Hartford on March 7th. So, I just wanted to share that. Tom Franklin, our new tech ed teacher, coordinated the club. We had some parental help with it, and the kids just did an unbelievable job. So, thank you for the time. Just wanted to share that.
Thanks.
Nice.
Nice.
Let's see, that brings us up to public comment. If anyone likes to address the board on any matter concerning the district at this time, yep, come up to the podium and state, give us your name and address, and if you could limit your comments to about three minutes, that would be most appreciated by the board.
Jane Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Madison, 57 Hillcrest Road, Nyanyak. And I'm a recently retired kindergarten and reading recovery teacher from Nyanyak Center School. I'm here tonight because I heard there might be some cuts in the area of reading, and I want to speak about the importance of reading recovery. I was one of the three teachers selected to be trained during the 1994, that's how old I am, '95, school year, and where it was brought to the three elementary schools. I taught reading recovery for 19 years in half-day kindergarten until Eastlime went to full-day kindergarten. And I do want to stop here and thank you again for supporting the move to full-day kindergarten because it really was a blessing, not only for the students but for the teachers too. So, thank you. When I taught reading recovery, I would tell my parents that I felt it was a win-win situation for their child. First, if their child discontinued, he or she would return to the classroom needing no further intervention. However, if the child doesn't discontinue, I still feel as though it's a win because that child has had 12 to 20 weeks of good, solid instruction. Also during that time, much data is collected, which will help determine what the next steps are for that child. Reading Recovery is a research-based reading program for first-grade students with reading difficulties. The beauty of it is the child works on a variety of things during their 30-minute lesson. First, the child reads one or multiple familiar books. This helps them to gain phrasing, expression, fluency, and especially confidence. Next is the phonics part of the lesson. There's letter, sound, word work, which at the beginning might just be identifying a letter or writing a letter, but it moves on to vowels, syllables, word chunks, prefixes, word endings. Then, the child carries over this new or reinforced knowledge when writing a sentence or two. And I think what you need to know is writing a sentence when you're in first grade is a more difficult task than you might think because first, the child has to think of a sentence, then be able to break it into words, the words into syllables, and then the sounds. Maybe at first, the child may only be able to write a beginning or an ending sound, but eventually is able to move on to becoming a confident writer, writing longer or multiple sentences using letter sounds, vowels, word chunks, spacing, punctuation. And the last part of the reading recovery lesson is introducing a new book. This book is chosen by what occurred in the previous day's lesson, or the teacher might even decide to change the book choice because of something that occurred earlier in the lesson. The beauty of, that's the beauty of reading recovery. Its motto is "Follow the Child." You work on what that individual child needs at that moment. Plus, if you find that what you planned needs to be changed, that can be done in an instant. In a group situation, although helpful, the lesson plan has to encompass the various needs of different students in each group. So, during the lesson, you're not able to address each child's specifics needs every day. When teaching kindergarten, I would teach reading to most of my students in a one-to-one situation, and then eventually, I'd put them in a group in order to get them ready for first grade. As I told my principals multiple times that I can do more in five minutes, one-to-one, than I can in 15 minutes, one-to-three. Here again, while working with multiple students, you're not always able to address each child's specific needs, and you are also dealing with group behavior. Believe me, that doesn't happen in a one-to-one situation. In closing, I just want to say that reading recovery helped me become a more focused and better reading and kindergarten teacher. It's the questioning system that is carried out throughout the whole kindergarten day, not just during language arts. In a perfect world, rather than discussing cutting reading recovery, I would wish that the district had the money to have all kindergarten and first-grade teachers trained in reading recovery. What a difference that would make for our youngest students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board on any matter at this time? Yes? First on Mac. at Flanders for looking to hire additional K and one teachers next year. It's critically important, Lorraine just said it all beautifully, there's so much that the children need to do during those first two years of school. And with large class sizes, it's been really challenging. You have behavioral issues, you have academic issues, separation from parent issues early on, and I really want to thank you for investing in the children and hiring the additional staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. Excellent. Anybody else like to address the board this time? Whoops, you got one more. You'll go next, Bonnie.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Ellen Weewell, forty-one Bush Hill Drive, Niantic. I'm here as a parent of seven children who have been in the East Lime Public School system. Two of them have required assistance with the reading recovery program. And I just wanted to say that without that program, they would not have been caught early enough, nor would they be as successful as they are today. One currently is a technical writer for tech manuals for Blackhawk helicopters, and he never would have had the confidence or courage to do something like that. And the other one was able to manage to go through studies in a different country and graduate through the International Baccalaureate Program, and she struggled with reading. So, now she's on at college and doing quite well for herself. So, I just wanted you to know that it really was an important part of our lives for these two, and I'd like to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Bonnie?
Trying to get better at public speaking as my New Year's resolution, so thank you for the opportunity. Just kidding. My name is Bonnie Dombrowski. I live at one oh three Walnut Hill Road. I'd like to discuss three items with the board tonight. I'll be as succinct as I can, but these are complicated issues. Currently, as you've heard, we have a reading recovery interventionist at each of the three elementary schools. The caseload for each of these intervention specialists, as you heard, includes first-graders who have been identified as struggling readers in need of extra intensive support. Two weeks ago, the superintendent's budget proposal included eliminating at least two of the reading recovery positions to offset the cost of two additional kindergarten teachers. The status of the third reading recovery position was unclear. Although I do support discontinuing the reading recovery program, I do not support eliminating these intervention positions altogether. There will be a continued need to provide extra support for struggling readers in our youngest grades. Last year, when it was decided to discontinue the constellations program at Flanders and the looping program at Niantic Center, it was not decided to eliminate the teaching positions involved with those programs altogether. That would not have made sense. The continued need for those instructional positions was obvious, and eliminating the positions altogether would have just added significantly to the class sizes of the remaining teachers. So, when the reading recovery program is discontinued, does it make sense to eliminate the intervention positions altogether? What will happen to the caseloads of interventionists next year? Will struggling first-grade readers, who already experienced large class sizes in kindergarten at two of our schools, not receive any additional support? Or will the special ed staff, who was already overburdened with serving the needs of larger-than-anticipated caseloads, be expected to pick up and provide services to those additional children as well? There was no mention in the superintendent's budget of additional positions to be added for special ed. Which brings me to item number two. Two weeks ago, the board discussed at length the class sizes for kindergarten and first grade. It was emphasized how class size alone, regardless of any other factors, significantly affects learning outcomes. Nearly every board member expressed concern and support for adding an additional teacher in kindergarten and first grade so that we can more closely adhere to the class size guidelines that the board set forth in writing two years ago. I wholeheartedly support allocating resources to reduce class sizes at the kindergarten and first-grade level, and I thank all of you for your commitment to that initiative. However, all the discussion and emphasis during that meeting regarding the class size guidelines for general education made me wonder, is there a similar caseload guideline for special education interventionists? I searched the Board of Ed website and read through many of the policies currently in place, including the class size guidelines for general ed, but I could not find anywhere a similar caseload guideline for special ed. So, if we have acknowledged with conviction that class size alone significantly affects learning outcomes, it seems logical that case size alone would significantly affect the learning outcomes of our most at-risk learners. Now, the initial response to that suggestion may be, well, there's too much variability in the needs of special ed students to establish case size guidelines. I would respond that number one, those same students are, for the most part, included in the general education classes, and we still found it possible and appropriate to establish class size guidelines for general ed. Number two, we should at least be able to establish an upper limit guideline for caseloads. Since the more significant the needs of our special ed population, the lower the required caseload should be as a result. And number three, these are our most vulnerable learners. So, doesn't an upper limit guideline to ensure they are receiving the intensive instruction they require make even more sense in the big scheme of things? Has anyone on the board inquired about how the caseload numbers for special ed at Flanders or any of the other elementaries been impacted this year with a larger-than-anticipated student population? I can tell you from personal experience and observation at Flanders that our special ed team seems to be at or well over their maximum capacity. This impact, the impact this has on students includes missed service times due to teachers being pulled away to conduct testing, or attend PPT meetings, or missed service times due to teacher absences. Sometimes, there's a substitute teacher who is not certified in the special ed program that many students, including my own, receive. And we all know the best sub is simply that, a substitute and not a replacement. When general education teachers need to have conferences with parents, we shut down the entire district for a day and a half, twice a year, so as not to interrupt the learning of our students with teacher absences to attend parent meetings. We don't do that with special ed. Students often go without instruction when a teacher is pulled away to a meeting. I can also tell you from personal experience that being at or over capacity negatively impacts student outcomes, and learning progress can slow or stall. It places a huge and stressful burden on our dedicated staff, whose stress levels must be like triage nurses trying to do the best they can with what they have, knowing it's not enough for everyone. So, for the sake of our most at-risk students and for the sake of our valuable special ed staff, I ask the board to consider writing special ed case size limit guidelines and higher where we exceed those guidelines. And now for my third and final item. If the board feels that special ed services are already too costly, what is being done to make those dollars most efficient? Is it possible to reduce the number of students in need of or reduce the length of time spent receiving special ed services? East Lime is not unique or being taken advantage of when it comes to the rising costs of special ed. This is a trend seen across the state and in our local areas. There is absolutely no quick or simple solution to such a complex and varied area of education. However, I was interested to read in a recent article in the Connecticut Mirror, which discusses rising special education costs across the state, that a review of Connecticut was conducted by a special education expert at Vanderbilt University. That expert review found that many unresolved reading problems inflate the number of students later referred for special education. The analysis concluded that, and I quote, "Greater success in teaching reading in the early grades has an effect on the number of children referred to special education in later grades due to poor reading achievement," end quote. So, one avenue for containing our special education costs long-term is to take a serious look at our reading programs and invest in curriculum which aligns with the science of reading, which has been the thrust of the concerns that I and other parents have brought to this board over the last month. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bonnie. Thanks, Bonnie. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Yes.
Julie Horner, forty-two Menwaring Road. I'm here mostly because the budget is a very difficult process, and I apologize that you spent countless hours fighting for our children and our teachers, and it's a hard process. But along with that, I'm speaking as an advocate for the children and to ensure our reading recovery program stays. I've seen my own children go through school. I've worked in special ed. I've worked in first and second grade. I'm currently in kindergarten. And as many of you are aware, and hopefully a lot of the public, NCS recently scored very high in the paper, and we have the highest elementary school index. I think that's from hard work. It's from dedication and having programs like reading recovery. Specifically, as a first-grade teacher, I saw children who would grow, they would thrive, and they would take risks in their learning with the support of reading recovery. I had kids in first grade that, instead of being, you know, in tears to actually try to read, the support of the program gave them the courage to try. It's hard to try. It's hard to try in kindergarten, it's hard to try in any age. But I think that intense program allowed them to meet the challenges. Our standards have come way down. What I taught in second grade, I had to teach in first grade. What I taught in first grade is a demand for kindergarten. So, we can't pull from programs and structure and support that lets children take the risks and kind of leap. So, reading recovery may not meet the needs of kids that eventually need other programming, but that's why we have special ed and support services. But we can't get rid of our reading program. Many of my kids would grow in leaps and bounds in first grade. They would take risks. They would feel like readers. And then their next year, they might be developmentally growing on comprehension, but they were able to crack the code, they were able to become readers. So, I think even though you're going to be hit time and time again, you need to cut, you need to cut, you need to cut, I don't think it should come from reading. I don't think it should come from support people that are there for our kids. The way they meet our standards is by having strong reading people interventionists, our reading recovery people are interventionists the rest of the day. So, they don't just hit them in first grade, they hit them along the way based on what their needs are, and they work with our language arts consultants, they work with parents, and they work with the teachers to help us improve what we're doing. So, I wish you luck during the process, but even though I know reading recovery was possibly going to be cut, it was possibly being put back, I think you need to keep it, and you need to keep the people in front of kids to provide them what they need to bring them up, so that as they get here or go off to, like Ellen's, kids as adults, they have those skills. And there will still be kids who need other things. That's why we have special ed, and that's why there's the law. So, I think that's important as we move forward. If we want our index to stay or to rise, we need to still provide programs. So, thank you for listening, to everybody, and for the work you do.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Good. Okay, let's see, we have some minutes for approval from our January thirteenth meeting, which was a regularly scheduled meeting. Would you like to make a motion on those minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our regularly scheduled January thirteenth meeting. I'll second.
Can the second's good. Any corrections, modifications to those? No? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Lee abstains? Yeah, those are all set. Special reports. Mr. Daigle's here today for the board reflection. Hi, Paul.
Good evening. As you're well aware, the budget season, at least at our level, is getting ready to start. Folks have been hard at work at us, will unfold when you come before us in a few weeks, but we'll start in earnest with the town budget, with our meeting on Wednesday. The only other thing I have to bring is that the, at times controversial but much-needed East Lime Public Safety Building is progressing. We should have our final construction drawings here shortly, and be in a position to welcome bid to find out what the rail costs are, and we'll be moving forward that project as well. Other than those two items, I know you've got a full plate tonight. Make myself available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Paul? No? Thanks for being here. Let's see, we have our two student representatives from a high school, Paige and Grace.
Hi. I can go. So, just a few things that have been going on or that are expected to go on at the high school. So, we have our second dance of the year on Friday, which a lot of the students are excited about. And then, last Friday, we wore jerseys to support the Miracle League, and we also had accepted the donations for the Miracle League. And as a district, we made about one thousand six hundred and forty dollars for the Miracle League. And then, so now that midterms are over, which are a big relief for a lot of the students, we're off to a pretty good start for the new semester. Schedules changes were going on just last week. And besides that, we also had the Poetry Out Loud competition last week on Thursday. We had in first place a senior, Megan Delillo, and then second and third place was Caroline French and Ella Rup, who are both juniors. About thirty students participated in that event, which is very exciting. And then, grades are also busy fundraising for their classes. For example, the freshmen had a cornhole tournament last week, and the seniors are having one this week. And then, college planning night is this Thursday for mostly juniors. And also, the Spanish Honor Society is working on fundraising for a girls' orphanage in Mexico.
So, some sports updates. The girls' track team just won ECCs this past Saturday, and the boys came in second. Both teams had plenty of state and national qualifiers, so that's very exciting. The girls' basketball team is currently seven and seven with a game tomorrow night, home against New London at seven, and their senior night is this Thursday, home against Waterford at seven. The boys' basketball team is currently four and nine with a game tomorrow night away at Lejard, and the big Waterford rivalry game is on Thursday at Waterford at seven, so you should definitely try and make it out to that. Yeah, that's all I have.
Any questions for our student representatives? Thanks for being here. All right. Okay, that brings us into our discussion items for the evening. First one up is a discussion of the superintendent's proposed East Lime School budget for two thousand twenty twenty-one.
So, yeah, maybe just a quick recap. So, this is our, I think, our third, or second, third meeting? One discussion, two, three, right?
Yeah, this is the third one.
Because we had FFO in there too. So, FFO was last, that's right, FFO was last one. FFO had a chance to review some of the revised budgetary needs impact sheet. So, really want to kind of, I think, start there and address your attention, you know, to that, to that document. Got a couple of copies too we can pass out for members of the public. And this is what we went over at FFO. John was there, and Eric was there. I think we had some good discussions about where we came in at with the four point two six recommended budget increase over the current year, and then the additional staffing that we talked about as a board, and what we wanted to do with that. So, that's probably the place to kick it off. There's a lot of supporting documentation too that we've attached in board docs. I've got some additional copies here I think we want to reference or review, but I think starting with that budgetary needs impact sheet would be the best place to start. So, with that, I'm going to kind of, I'm going to give this to Jackie to kind of pass out, so. Oh, Jackie, great. Super. Thanks. I need copies too, thanks. So, why don't we, why don't we have a discussion on that sheet? Paul, here, we've got a couple of copies here, so. The left side of that document is all of basically our discussed needs and additional staffing, you know, looking at going into next year, and this is, was not in our four point two six. So, I want to preface that. On the right side was the possible funding source. We did do some modifications to the possible funding source. I also want to reference that just today, we got word from the town, Mariana, that there was an additional reduction in the prior year's lease payments. So, it was a savings of ninety-five thousand dollars. So, we added that in right away. So, it brought our total, yes, that was great news. So, it brought our total down to the eight twenty-three, eight thirty-five, which is over the four point two six. And if you look to the right with obviously some of our possible funding sources with those items, we're basically looking at six forty-one, oh four five. I'll put it out there. Total right now, you're sitting at a five point five seven percent increase in the operating budget. That is not including technology, which we know we've talked about. Technology is, you know, looking at through the acquisition plan and working with the town to bond that. Not in these.
Doesn't include.
The annual payments, yes, it's not here, the acquisition payment. It is reflected there at a higher amount, which would cover the yearly payment of nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So, it brought our total, yes, that was great news. So, it brought our total down to the 823, 835, which is over the 4.26. And if you look to the right, we've obviously some of our possible funding sources with those items. We're basically looking at 641, 045. I'll put it out there. Total right now, you're sitting at a 5.57% increase in the operating budget. That is not including technology, which we know we've talked about. Technology is, you know, looking at through the acquisition plan and working with the town to bond that. That's a number, not in these.
Doesn't include.
The annual payments, yes, it's not here, the acquisition payment. It is reflected there at a higher amount, which would cover the yearly payment of $927,000. So, I'll stop talking there, and we'll kind of open it up for conversation around these items, and then providing supporting documentation as well that we want to look at.
Questions? Comments?
A question I have is in terms of the addition of the first grade teachers, Flanders and Haynes, just how does that, how, what does that translate to in projected class sizes for next year then?
So, the current kindergarten classes at both of those schools sit around 20 or 21. It might be, is there one class of 22 as well, I think? You have one at 22, right? At kindergarten. So, you know, we're anticipating that group, it is a disservice, I think, to that group of kids that will now move to first grade and second grade and on, having those high class sizes in, you know, first grade and second grade and on. So, bringing in those, we talked about the four teachers, two for K next year and two for first grade, would bring those class sizes back down to around 15 or 16, which falls back into our recommended guidelines, which is, yeah, we've attached the guidelines so you can see the guidelines again. That's a document we just should have with us all the time, our talking budget. So, that would accept.
Typically, those, when they transition from kindergarten to first grade, we tend to, the numbers stay where they're at, or we pick some more?
Yeah, I mean, case in point, that Flanders class was that they're now, I think, third or fourth grade. When we had to hire additional kindergarten teacher, Linda, that group of, is still a high group of kids that has gone through the system. So, generally, once they're with us, the, that size, that class size stays. I can't guarantee that's what's going to happen, but that's pretty much the case. So. One thing we did talk about, I'll share with, just with kindergarten, I mean, we do have, you know, the studies, Melon McBroom, as well as, you know, we did look at some NASDAQ material as well. I know we rely on our study with Melon McBroom. The projected kindergarten numbers were supposed to be a little bit smaller for next year, but we gambled this year and really lost. So, I'm not really comfortable in the world of gambling on, you know, numbers of kids in classes. So, it's early.
Yeah, I know last meeting, we had talked about if we are rolling out global language again at the elementary, we'll make sure that we want to do it excellently. Maybe the addition of the global language teachers on here, what would that mean in terms of, like, minutes for kids with global language?
Twenty minutes twice a week, K to four.
Okay.
So, we've mapped out, we've scheduled out a .5 teacher at every building. .5 would equate for the prep time that they should have, their lunch, and then the 20-minute, twice a week, K, four.
Okay. And just so I have, like, full context, how does that compare to where we were previously when we had global language at elementary?
So, it was two 20 minutes, fourth grade only.
Just fourth grade, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What happened?
John raised his hand. Barry, you'll go next.
Just for clarification, for the public's knowledge, from the FFO meeting, you found X number of savings from that FFO meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
That's really important to say.
Yeah, thank you, John, yes. And we just got that today, morning, so we, Mariana had the.
Well, I mean, like, the global language teacher moving that from middle school to elementary, like, that wasn't in that discussion. So, that was a, that was a plan. So, that's awesome, in terms of finding that, those reductions.
Good. Barry?
I'll just first.
That's okay. No problem.
Just wanted to quick follow, what you said, the moving from elementary school to middle school, what happens to the global language?
Moving from elementary to middle? What do you mean?
Programming, Barry, or?
You mean hours, minutes per week?
Oh, so, it, so when they go into fifth grade, they have an option in regards to which language they have exposure, as far as for French and as far as Spanish. Blocks are 48 minutes in length, as far as it's rotated, and then when they go into sixth grade, they choose a language.
Just for Spanish at the elementary.
The same choice for 40 minutes per block. How many blocks a week?
So, all, it depends on the rotation of the key of the third.
Approximately once a week, once every other week, once every third week?
No, so you could have three times a week, you could have twice a week, depending on the rotation.
Going from middle school to high school?
85-minute blocks, every other day.
The comments?
No.
Kate?
Have we pursued language labs, other alternatives, actually hiring staff and additional faculty?
We have, we have not at this time. Okay, no.
You mean instead of?
Yeah.
You mean instead of?
Yeah, just because it might be more cost effective.
I don't know, can you just explain what a language lab is? I don't know what that is.
Using technology, using language as a resource through technology, we're doing a big technology push, so why not push that in a whole another paradigm so that you could instruct it? Didn't you have language labs in high school where you put on headphones and you have tapes and, oh, okay, so.
Others may have, I didn't.
Tim gets it, so, yeah.
Like a Rosetta Stone.
But the point about, is there a way that we can bring technology in with, you know, I mean, you're going to have to have some sort of staff support, but I would imagine, but utilizing technology to, you know, instead of doing kind of the brute force method?
I'm just thinking, trying to think creatively, it's always win-win, as far as I'm concerned. I like the idea of language, I like the idea of early exposure, I like the idea of as much opportunity as frequently as possible. Sometimes, if you buy language programs, and of course, it would be a whole site license or three-site license, I would imagine, because you have three different elementary buildings that you could be instituting us into. So, providing that same service, and it could be high quality as well, but just doing it in a different manner. And you wouldn't have to have health insurance and sickly.
Almost like a Rosetta Stone type experience.
Exactly, exactly.
Similar to what they do in.
And some of those are very effective, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, oh, okay. I want to, just, um, quick, you know, there's that bubble at the middle school level right now with a lower population, so, hence you see, you know, the move one world language teacher down, but that population's going to go back up with elementary levels. So, just want to be cognizant that we're really truly trying to stay true to the fact that we're watching where the enrollment is going and being able to reduce where we can reduce, but we're going to have to add back in where we need to add back in. So, it's not going to disappear forever, that's for sure.
Barry?
On the line, Kate was thinking on other options. Do you need, I would be to say, community members who may be retired and speak languages that would be willing to come into the schools and speak with kids? Basically have conversational groups as opposed to classes?
I think that's a great idea. Michelle Snitkin is doing that currently. She's working, I think, in ASNICS, teaching some classes. I know we have a lot of large Chinese population, we could probably introduce some more languages, wouldn't have to just be French and Spanish, but there are Chinese.
Cultural experience or?
Well, there's fluent Chinese speakers, people who speak Mandarin, who could come in and do some early language lessons. Absolutely, culture too. My kids did Concordia Language Village, when we lived in Nebraska, they'd go up to Minnesota for an entire week. They would be inundated with whatever language. My son did Chinese, my daughter did French, my son ate rice three times a day, my daughter had fondue and crepes and lovely food. It was just an amazing experience, so that's how they learned the language. It was a whole system.
Bargaining issues?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
So, this may be an Amy question or a Jeff question, but so with this 30,465 and the goal you have for elementary global language, is this the plan that you guys want to implement and the principals feel comfortable with in terms of implementing it?
So, what we're comfortable implementing is it's starting in kindergarten.
Yeah.
That's a big push from the world language staff here, especially at the high school and middle school, needing that exposure to language earlier. I think one of the things we're trying to do right now is reach out to other districts that have a K four, K to four. I had sent you a South Windsor example, just so you could sort of see how through the arts and music, just sort of an innovative way, because somebody had posed, you know, what would that look like? So, I think right now, what we're trying to figure out is within that rollout, what does that look like? But we're consistently hearing that sort of double dip in that exposure, that 20-minute time period seeming to be something that we're, that's non-negotiable to us, and starting in K.
Salem is K to four with their language program, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I'm, just real quick, so I'm probably the no vote in terms of like increased spending and stuff like that, generally on this board, but if that's a program that works, that the principals feel comfortable with, that you guys feel comfortable with, then that investment, instead of, I mean, great thinking on outside the box stuff, but if that's what you guys are comfortable with, that's, that's an investment that we should make, so.
Passes the bomb and test.
Yeah, Eric supports it, I support it.
I'm talking to, that the earlier the better. And really, that's where we have not been strong in the past, how many years that we've been trying to, you know, excel on it and to grow it, and it just, there are kids that are in preschool that have more exposure, and then they come into kindergarten and first grade, and they have no exposure. Then again, you know, we were trying in the fourth grade, I mean, the investment was there and the idea was there to start at fourth grade and then slowly integrate it, you know, to get where we needed to be. And it just, it didn't take off. So, I really like what they've come up with as far as to reestablish it, and we really do need it. I mean, we are one of the only districts, honestly, that don't have it.
So, it's an interesting landscape, I will add, just because I just pulled up the additional survey. So, I have about 23, I think, up to now, districts, so I'll upload it into Board Docs, so you can see what other districts are offering as far as language, so that you can see who has had to make cuts, who has it, how they have it. So, I did sort of a regional survey from the last board meeting, so you can see that as well. Okay.
Yeah, let's see, I can't, Eric, and then Candace.
So, I have some broad comments, but I'll focus because we're really talking about global language now, and just some thoughts. So, you know, for me, it's an and, not an or, that I don't think this is sufficient. I know we haven't, we haven't had like a budget workshop or something on global language. I know we polled it, because I don't think what we had was effective, and I think we agreed that this probably wasn't the answer, so we kind of paused for a year and kind of saying, we need something more than what we had. And we know that children learn language when they're young. They pick it up like sponges, and as you get older, it gets harder and harder to pick up foreign language. That, you can read plenty of studies and look that up. So, introducing it in kindergarten makes total sense, this is what we need to do. I, you know, I'm also a big proponent of using technology. I think it's an and, so I think 20 minutes twice a week is not how you learn a language, even conversational, not that we have to do, you know, I don't know where people stand on grammar and conjugation and all that other stuff versus conversational language. I mean, there's all kinds of thinking, I have thoughts, I'm sure we all have different thoughts, but I think it's an and, that 20 minutes twice a week, K through four, is nice, but I think we actually need to learn that. And adding technology to supplement what is also in those 20 minutes and having both of those, that sounds like a real plan on how you learn a language. So, I think, I mean, what you're describing and seeing what we have, like we have for reading, was it reading plus and math, something, we have technology that kids can use at home for reading, they can use, I can't remember what the math one is, but we have technology that allows that to have a similar, something similar from a language perspective, sounds phenomenal. I mean, that's, that's, if kids really want to learn a language, that's how you learn a language. And immersion, if we could do it, I don't know how we do that, but if we can get some type of immersion, fantastic. But that's my thought on global language. I think it's an and, I think we need this, it just gets things going, but then we need something else to supplement it, and some of these ideas sound, sound great if we can implement them.
Candace?
Yeah, I was just going to add, as far as the lab thought, because I thought that that was a good idea, but not instead of, because I mean, we're talking about K through four learning, so I would, you know, think that utilizing technology, resources, and other, you know, options for children to learn in addition to that, so, yeah.
And I would like to have, maybe after budget season, maybe we can talk, bring, I guess it's not more comment time for agenda topics, but I would like to talk more about global language and maybe the best way to implement it, and then see what others are doing, have a bigger discussion on that.
Now, Jeff, refresh my memory, we're going to have, at our next board meeting, we're going to have presentations and discussions about.
Structured literacy.
Structured literacy.
Yes, exactly. We just couldn't pull it all together for tonight, and I think we had a lot on the table as well.
Yeah.
So, next Monday night, we'll be talking, our literacy specialist will be here.
And that, and that, and that could have some budgetary.
Well, I guess yes or no. I mean, we backed off, we took out the reading recovery and the reduction of reading recovery, and made it work with what you see here, without cutting those reading recovery teachers. And we got a lot of feedback from, you know, the community and staff, and so we said, you know what, let's back off for now. And at that time, too, the board, we mentioned kind of increasing the budget, so we said, okay, we'll take them out, see where, that's where we're at now. And so, they're, they're not being reduced or cut in any way right, as of right now.
Jamie?
So, I'm just going to reiterate what I mentioned the last meeting, that I'm wholeheartedly in favor of K through four language, if we're going to implement it correctly. We're going to implement it like we've done the last two times we've done elementary language. I'm in favor of getting it out of the budget now and just not worrying about it, because our last two attempts at elementary language have been failed, and we've done a real disservice to our kids by not giving them a program that's actually effective. But if we're going to actually do it the right way, I'm in favor of keeping it here. But in my head right now, I just see it as like a placeholder. I don't see it as an actual program until we've come back with an actual program to implement. So, to me, I'm seeing it just as a placeholder, not as an actual budget line item.
I just.
Yeah, oh yeah, sure.
I know that we talked a little bit about Amy then coming back with a more stronger, structured presentation, because the fact was, if it was going to be an option, if we were all going to agree to, you know, really consider actually this back and doing what we intend, that you were going to come back and show us exactly what that was going to look like. And I look forward to that. So, whether or not we have it this way, or if we have it here, I think it would really be better.
Yeah.
Other? I am, I am totally, totally, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, can I say something?
Yeah, you go, you go, we're going, yeah, you get your turn, you get your turn too.
Class size, I think that is our, that is just absolute key priority. I mean, we'd be crazy not to, not to be responsible for that. I just think that's, that's, that's an absolute must. I am so convinced that the math coaches are a good idea. I just, I think we've, we've heard it, and I tell you, I was, had an opportunity to walk through Flanders with some westerly board members. We gave them a little tour, and we stumbled into the library, and who's the math consultant person? Tracy. Tracy was there, and they had, I don't know what grade it was, but they were little, all with their headphones on and all this stuff, and they were, they were, they were having math, and they were going through it. And it was pretty remarkable, and to see her and the one-on-one interactions that she was having, there was some other staff and all this stuff, but I just, I just saw it, and, and I know you included the test scores and one of the documents and so forth. To me, it just seems like we should, we've got to take, take a decision on that. Either, either we're going to do it, which I think we should, or we're going to not, never talk about it again, and we're going to have, and we're going to have trailing math scores. So, that's my, I'm taking that. So, that's my two cents. Eric?
Yeah, thanks. So, just some broad comments. I mean, Tim, you kind of alluded to them already, but I'll be, I said some of this last meeting, but I'll say it again. So, in terms of first grade teachers, I know people might say, oh, well, we got by in kindergarten this year, and now they're in first grade, and it's fine. It's like, it wasn't fine.
No.
It's what happened, right? We, last minute, we had more than, we had more students than we expected, they broke over, they were over the threshold, more enrolled, whatever, and we went to Flanders Niantic Center and, well, we be, and asked, what, how do you want to handle this? Niantic Center said they wanted another teacher, which then took kids who were in with a teacher already and broke them off, and then for the other schools, they said, you know what, the kids are settled already, let's add a parrot to each class and we'll, we'll make do. So, that's not the way you, that's not a long-term solution, that's a, let's get through this one year. So, we need two more first grade teachers, I don't, that's not debatable. The kindergarten teachers for next year, my view on what I'd like to do is we need to have them in the budget because if we need them, we need to have them.
Right.
But if we don't need them, if the, McBroom and.
Malone and McBroom.
Can never remember. M and M. If they, if their stats, which were pretty good for last year, if they're right and we may not need this kindergarten teachers, then I would say, if we don't need them, give the money back to the town. I don't, I don't want to keep the money and say, oh, great, we got the money, now we can reinvest it. That, I don't think that's being transparent. But if we, if we need them, we need it. And I think we, we need to, I think the way you do it is you budget for it and then you can always, you know, and June, as we start seeing what our numbers look like, I think we'll have a pretty good idea, do we need them or don't we need them? But we won't know that, you know, in the time, whatever, March, April, May, by the time the budget is done. So I, I just want, that, that's important. And then the math coaches, I agree with Tim and I appreciate last meeting, the, helping me understand more about what they do and how they work. We have deferred this for many years and I think it's, it's time to make that investment. So I'll, you know, agree with Tim on that. And, and, you know, I think there are some numbers in the deck about average budget increase over the years. And I think we're at two point four eight over the past eight years, something like that, if you, our average budget increase. I don't have the data, but my guess is that our contractual obligations, meaning from our unit contracts, are probably higher than two point four eight per year.
Right.
So if they were, I'm just gonna use round numbers, say it was two and a half and we were, and the contractual obligations are three, we're at negative funding. Basically, we're taking our contractual obligations and we're at a negative funding rate for investment in our schools, which for a few years, hey, that happens, we have to get through. But that's not a long-term solution because your schools will eventually decline. So we do need to start making some investments. We need to make the right investments and choose the ones that are, make the most sense. Math coaches is one where I think this is the time we need to invest. I think we've, the increase in teachers is really variable with our town. Our town is growing, we're getting more people in, we see a lot of development. Hopefully, our grant list is growing, which means our taxes should be growing, which hopefully in turn pays for the teachers. And I know it won't work out perfectly, looking at my Board of Finance members out there. But, but in theory, we have come down at times where we've had fewer students. There is some variability. If we have more students, we need more teachers to a degree. So I just wanted to say that.
Anybody else? Oh, Barry. Jamie?
Fire away and then Barry, come.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with everything that Eric said, but I'm gonna reiterate the fact that I am once again sad not to see drug and alcohol counselors in our budget. I know that the one that we have is severely overworked. And I love that we have a social worker in there because I also know our social worker is seriously overworked. We all know there's an opioid crisis. I mean, it's not like it's hiding. And it is affecting our students. It's either in their home, it's them, themselves, their parents. And it's affecting their school, their learning. And without help, they're not getting what they need to get from us. We're not giving them what they need without having some kind of counseling available for them. I know we talk about it, we do have one, we, we do employ a drug and alcohol counselor. I don't think it's enough. I know Park and Rec is putting it in their budget again this year, but it always inevitably gets cut. But I, I think that it's something that we are going to start having problems with if we are not taking care of that side of our children as well. I mean, I, I know I say it all the time, I know we can't be adding stuff into the budget all the time either, but I think that if they're not getting what they need mentally and physically, they're not going to be present in their seats in schools. If they're having problems with other stuff, they're not going to be present, they're not going to be learning and it's gonna affect everything else. So just say that again.
Barry?
So as we go through this discussion, are we going to, is this like an open discussion of technology, the class size, the math coaches, global language? Are we gonna go through each one of those individually?
Basically, you can say whatever you would like to say.
This is about the whole budget package.
Yeah, yeah. But, but we're gonna, I mean, but, but if you have any specifics you want to raise and.
He does.
Yeah. Fire away.
Worry of being out of order.
No, no, you can say, no, this is board discussion. So you can, basically anything, if you, you know, if you have some details that you want, you want to have more information on, you can pass that along to our administrative team or if you want to make some higher level comments, that's great.
Jamie got me thinking last week with that question of getting it right. When I looked at all this, with that question in mind of, are we sure with this budget investment that we are getting it right? So I just, I looked through research journals and various other stuff related to, in each of these issues of technology, global language, class size and math coaches, are we getting it right? We're bringing up all kinds of stuff like the issue of global language. I came into a Saturday night live presentation by William Fratner. Presentation on the five minute break. She solved the question, she started, okay, we're gonna start first class, Spanish. Como está usted? You say muy bien, gracias. Good, we're all done Spanish because five years from now, that's all you're gonna remember of Spanish. That's kind of summarize what Eric and you were saying, but the immersion of languages. Think, will we do it, we have to figure out how are we gonna do it such that we're gonna write. I was also looking at the accountability index, you know, and the fact that how, even this last one, we're still, the district plateauing on fifty to sixty percent of our students meeting their individual growth targets. And that's something that's been kind of hanging around there for five or six years. And just, that is concerning that, you know, if we're going to move off that plateau and start moving forward, we have to look very carefully about what is our strategy for implementing these things. Example, I began in looking at class sizes. And over ninety-six studies with seven hundred and eighty-five effects with five hundred and fifty thousand students, the overall effect suggests that class size is good for teachers, which is where they kind of like it. But the effect on achievement is minimal. Effects there go down to point on zero. So simply, as in all these things, simply by doing it does not mean that we're going to have an effect on student achievement. And one of the things that happens with class sizes is that as the size of the class moves down, teachers bring along the same strategies they use when they have largest classes to teach smaller classes. And so if their instructional strategies were marginal in larger classes, they come down and they replicate in the smaller classes, so you won't get an increase in achievement of the smaller classes. And so most of the research on this is basically if we move to smaller classes, it requires a reconceptualization of what it means in the district to be an effective teacher. To look carefully at the coaching literature and Jamie gives us a good idea of like the things that it can lead to. When you look at those studies, those outcomes occur when there is an optimal set of strategies for using coaching. Now, there are some cases where they have paired districts where they looked at the difference in the coaching effect. One district versus the other, there's an effective full standard deviation in student achievement because of the different ways the coaching process was implemented in the two districts. Where the larger effect occurred, coaching emphasized instructional practice. In the district where it was less effective, the coaching impacted and concentrated on behavioral class management. So the strategy, the optimal strategy would use in coaching and instructional practice. Another study that in coaching, most of the coaches use their times for more time doing student assessment, teaching students, managing materials and attending meetings than they did in coaching. So again, it's just the idea that simply by having coaches, it does not create the effect unless the coaching is done with a very effective strategy. And across these studies in coaching, the key issue was, the question was, is there a shared understanding of what good instruction looks like in your district? It's a question that's very similar to the one with class size and very similar to the one with technology that I brought up last year. And so if there is this emphasis on a strategy where there's a clear and shared understanding of what effective teaching involves in our district, then that's a good way to go. Then we can fully support the, you know, these budget interventions. Then went and looked at all the school improvement plans and I looked at the district improvement plan to see if, where was the evidence or what evidence there was that there was a shared understanding of effective teaching throughout the schools, throughout the district as reflected in the school improvement plans and the district improvement plans. There are, five, six, seven, at least eight or nine different references to instructional strategies throughout those plans. Each of those strategies in themselves has probably anywhere from three to seven different strategies within the frameworks. And we have about seven to ten instructional frameworks referenced in those things. And each of the frameworks has seven to ten strategies, plus there are references to six different researchers that are using the plans. And put all that together and it's probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty different strategies for what effective instruction needs in the district. So I'm gonna put that all together and try to get back to this question, how are we gonna do it right? And I think that as a board, so we began this discussion on global language, if we are going to put these items in the budget, I think as a board, we have to make sure that the budget recommendations, along with a strong message from the board, that there has to be an accompanying strategy with, that revolves around simply like, what is, what do we mean by effective teaching and instruction in our district? And I think only by getting it that will these class size, technology, global language and that coaching be implemented, be effective. And I think that the clear measure we have to look at is more of the same isn't gonna work because we have four or five years where we've had only fifty to sixty percent of our students meeting their annual growth target in instruction. You know, I mean, that's not a one-time issue. I mean, it's, we're on a plateau. And I just, looking at this discussion, how are we gonna get it right? We have to get it right. And if we, it's gonna be some very careful work, I think, at a strategy that is going to make sure that we move those targets forward and we're not just doing more of the same.
Yeah, yeah. So certainly that, that goes, that basically says, it kind of supports what Jamie and I think Eric were saying about global language in terms of if we're gonna go forward with something in global language, we better make sure we've really got it, got it right and done, and done homework on that. I have to say the one thing on class size precedent, I think what we're trying to do is our district, we have for many years, we have tried to, you know, have class sizes within the guidelines that we've developed. And I think that, that that's kind of, that's kind of where our entire, you know, base has been. And so as the numbers have crept up in kindergarten and then they'll creep up now in first grade, I think what we're trying to do is say, we're not, we're not, we're not reducing class size. What we're doing is, is we're, we're keeping class size where we believe that the district wants to have the class sizes at and how we're structured for it. So that's the only thing I have to say about that. Candace?
I always want to give everybody kind of a backstory on those, the guidelines and how they came to be. I remember when I came to the board in two thousand and twelve and one of the reasons I came in here, I came in to advocate, I was at Lilly B Haynes as the PTA president and their third grade class was over twenty-five.
Yeah.
And had no idea at that time, was very naive. But each one of the schools had very different grade level kids in the classes, the class sizes themselves. So I can speak to one year, one school may have eleven or twelve students in their first grade class and you could go to one of the other schools that literally we could run to and they may have twenty-three or twenty-five students. So that's, that's in equity, okay? So first off, everyone is getting a very different education. Then teachers are being evaluated with a pretty rigorous chart and it, it doesn't really give a whole lot of flexibility. So then you would have a teacher being evaluated possibly with eleven students in her or his class versus twenty-three or twenty-four. Now, throw in the fact that you don't know what kind, if there's any special ed challenges in the class and or are not. And then let's throw in looping that one school had and the other two didn't. So there was a tremendous amount of inequity in the school district. So with reestablishing the schools, reestablishing, redistricting and all of these things. So every single year, in fact, I couldn't believe the numbers when I, when I came to sit here. And I can remember the, you could hear a pin drop when I actually spoke to it and I actually said it publicly, that we were at that time supporting and delivering unequal distribution of services throughout the school district and how wrong it was, right? Well, how do you fix it? You gotta have a lot of courage. And then I give it to this board for the people that were there at that time and have continued on that effort to deliver equity, right, in services. So one of the things that I wanted was a commitment. Granted, you can't with three different schools, it is very difficult and, and it's not easy at all. And you're not always going to have the same exact, but you'd have to have better than eleven to twenty-three, right? And that type of ratio. So I actually brought it here. And at the time, there were a couple of people that didn't, were very concerned about making that commitment, right? Because a lot of people don't. I think that, and, and interrupt me if I'm wrong, but, because I'm not supposed to speak for all. I felt like we were all committed to our school district, to our kids and, and acknowledging that a lower class size is better with learning and to create the most solid foundation for our students. So that's why we put it in place, right? And it was scary. It was scary to actually get it, to get it through. A lot of people didn't want it. And we had to fight for it. So now it's here, I, I fully support it, right? We always, we always try to do the best we can. Last year, we definitely, with class sizes, with people moving into our community, you can try to and, and hopefully have that number, but they change. The numbers change drastically. And I've heard people say, oh, we're losing people. Our town is exploding. We have five or six more. And I remember saying the same thing how many years ago when I was pleading about the schools. Don't shut one, we've got kids coming in here. We have residential developments that are going on in each one of the school districts. We put that in place for a reason. That was to hopefully not end up with class sizes at thirty because that is a reality for a lot of districts. And, and I don't want to, I don't think that that's going to be the best way to educate. So we adopted that for a reason and I think that we stand committed. I know I stand committed to it. I just wanted to give that.
What are the numbers?
What are the numbers?
You should have a grid.
As far as...
Do you have a grid? We were at the last meeting.
It's right here, it's in your board docs.
It's in board docs too.
Yeah, it's right here, class size guidelines.
I know what the guidelines are, but have we grown, and what is the total population of the school now as to last year or two years ago?
About the same right now, starting to creep up. The elementary, that's projected over the next seven years, we're supposed to back up over 3,000 students from what's projected.
How many?
Back up over 3,000 total students from what Malone and McBroom projected, and we did that study back in 2017, 18.
Okay. So it's, I mean, Candace, what I hear you say is like, there's development going on, buildings coming up, parents knocking on the door, buses coming in. I'm hearing kind of like this, this big influx of new people coming into town, and I'm kind of not hearing that from Jeff and Jennifer said.
So, no, my, what I'm saying is, is that we, we had, with our kindergarten classes past year, we had a greater influx than what we were anticipating, and that is going, that's going to move on to the first grade. And first grade classes will probably pick up some more students, I would imagine. They're probably, they're going to be big, and we should, we should fix that by the proposed addition of two additional first grade teachers. We should look at Eric's point, I thought was right on, which is you can never predict, although the numbers are right, and Candace's, you know, kind of pulse on what's going out there in the community, I would, I would bet that the kindergarten numbers are going to come in about where we're at now, or even higher than this year. And so having, planning to budget for additional kindergarten teachers is probably a smart thing to do. If it turned out surprise, we didn't get that many, then well, we would, that's something we would, we could, we could give, we could give back, or we'll certainly not hire teachers when they're not needed.
Yeah, the study that we did, Kate, or Malone and McBroom did for us speaks to rising numbers at the elementary school over, you know, not right at this second, but over the next couple of years, it's gradually increasing.
And that's based on looking at the birth rates going back five years.
Thank you for that.
I just want to note what you had just said. So not just myself identifying those projects, it's public knowledge that we're, we have like five or six actually. So all you have to do is...
My part's spoken up last time.
Yeah, all you have to do is look into it. And the actual residential facilities, the places of growth are within each one of our elementary school districts. The other thing is our rental population, which is very, very high. So that's what I mean to towards the end or right between the start of the school year, we usually see an influx for the renters and also people that are stationed here. I'm not too sure what you're talking about as far as parents knocking down the door. I didn't, but thank you.
My other question might be about the math coaches. Do we, how do we, I guess Amy's leaving, how do we imagine that to be looking, there's two coaches being identified as being needed?
Yeah, we have one already, so it'd be one at each elementary school.
Oh, okay. So three across the district.
Exactly. That way we don't, you know, Tracy's been pulling her hair out trying to get to every, you know, all three schools. She's doing the best she can, but she's just not meeting the need that we expect them on. But she's, she's done a fabulous job for one person trying to cover three schools.
Okay. I'm just wondering, just thinking outside of the box again, is there somebody who's a stellar math teacher who has the opportunity to maybe get stipends that would like to have it in there?
So we had, so just, you know, we had a long discussion about math coaches at the last meeting, and we talked exactly about that. So I, you know, I have to look back through the minutes to see how much we described all of that, but maybe it's something, because I don't know that we need to repeat, maybe it's something that maybe Lynda or someone, maybe you can bring Kate up to speed on what we talked about, or staff or somebody separate.
Yeah, every time we talk about math coaches the last three years, that, that concept has come up, which is a good, is a good thought. Jamie, you have something?
So listening to this conversation, I just had a little reminder flash blow through off in my head. Mariana, sorry, do you know how many of our students go to the now closing Dure Language Magnet School in Waterford that might be coming home?
One or two.
I was just going to say, maybe two. There's really not that many.
I think it's two.
I can check in a second, but it's not many.
We were talking about it, and I just now remembered that they're closing a magnet school, and those kids have to go somewhere.
Yeah.
So Barry, your, your points I thought, I mean, are right on in terms of saying, as we invest, we need to make sure we do our due diligence to understand that in fact, the investment that we're doing strategically on a whole scale is the, is the right direction to be going, and we're well founded. I mean, I think that, I mean, I think, what you, the points you were saying were right on. Lee, do you have something? You look like you're going to say something. Bill, you've been quiet over there.
I'm just taking it in. I certainly support having the smaller class sizes, as folks said, and I, while I understand what Barry was saying, it would, most cases, our students, our teachers have been working with class sizes that are smaller than what we had. So the reality is, that's what they're used to, so they're not used to what, what they got dealt with this year. So, and, and I agree with Eric, if we, for some reason, the numbers don't work out, then we can say, or they don't play out, I should say, then whether we give the money back to the town. But I'd certainly want to be prepared so that we don't get in the situation we did this year. I also support the, the math coaches. I, I don't know where we're going to start looking to get the number down. I think everything on there is stuff that we desperately needed, so.
So process wise, can you walk us through that in terms of public hearing next as a... Yeah, we're thinking about, that would be next, next Monday, and then we'd, we'd have the public hearing, and then on, on everything that we're seeing here, and then, well, I don't know if we'd vote, or if we would, if we would then continue our deliberations. I don't know. I just don't know if we'd be ready. But yeah, we could, we could take action at, at the board meeting that would be following the next, following that public hearing, or you could, or we could say, no, we need A, B, and C more, or the FFO needs to do something, or I, you know, whatever. But yeah, that's kind of the way that the schedule, did we hear about when we need, when the date we need to have our budget done?
I don't have solidified dates. Only thing, I know, I think it's potential for April 2nd, maybe presentation to the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, but I think by charter, we have to have it done in March, I think.
Well, and, but yeah, by end of February, it's supposed to be down to the town, maybe boys use that gauge, so. But we don't have, we've got tentative dates from when the town meetings are.
Have you gotten any feedback from our community? I know that I had asked at the, not the last meeting, the meeting before that, when it was first for that, when you put it onto the website, Q and A, have you gotten anything?
No, no, other than support from, you know, some of the, you know, PTA, and obviously our staff members that are in town. You know, we, I will speak publicly about, you know, Flanders does have a higher, some significant special education needs over there. We just, as I put that out to you in the next, we just added a .5 special education teacher, posted for it. There is a great need over there. So that's for the rest of this year, and then we're going to reevaluate the special education needs for next year. But as I said.
Do we get any type of reimbursement, anything additional for any of the, any special resources that we have to put in place from the state Connecticut?
Only excess costs, dollars, which are diminishing as well, because the state doesn't fully fund, you know, special education.
Right.
Now, we put that out a district placement chart in, in there so you could see it too. I mean, for a district our size, we only have 13 students that are outplaced across our entire population, but that adds up to 1.2, almost 1.2 million, I think it was in costs. So we need to keep that number low, but we need to, you know, fund and support, you know, the students that are in districts so they don't get outplaced sort of thing. I mean, just to reference Salem, which is one school.
Yeah, they just said, at their last meeting, they said they were spending over a million as well.
They hit 12 students.
And they're 12, and they're coming our way, right?
Yeah, exactly. So.
I mean, I knew the answer. I just wanted, I wanted to have that kind of a little bit of a discussion publicly so that people could understand that it is something that, I mean, we, we, we put into our budget, and we do not get funds usually back.
No, we don't, again, that might be...
And also, we do keep, we try to keep all of our students here versus outplacement.
Exactly.
And there's a reason for that.
But we need to make sure, yeah, we have the staff to support that, so people don't get hurt.
Of course.
That's a, that's a tough, a tough one that we're...
So that .5 that you added this year is not reflected in next year's budget either?
It's not, no, it's not.
And we may very well need that.
We very well may need it as we look at special education needs for next year. We just know that right now, we, we need it, and the question becomes, you know, we're working on, you know, how are we going to fund the, you know, it's February, but how are we going to fund a, you know, the .5 addition? But it's, it's based on student need.
The only other comment I had, I've been a little quiet over here, we talk about the, the global language piece and wanting to do it right. We've got one teacher, we're looking at a small thing, we haven't had discussion about what right looks like, right? We just put that number in there. And, and even, you know, I'm not sure we can get it right with that number, but if we can, I mean, I'd certainly want to listen to that. But even if we took that out, that's not a significant impact to what we're looking at for dollars.
You're right, it's 30,000.
It's not going to make a big dent in it if we stopped the...
Yeah, you're not going to see the number, the overall number move.
Okay. So with, with respect to the public hearing then, if we, if we think we should, if we're ready to kind of, we want to get officially get, get feedback on, on our, on our budget, I think we should do that. Does anybody have any, is, is a consensus that we should just kind of lay everything out there and say, here's, here it is? What is, would people come in and tell us what you, tell us what you think, so we can get that full, that full input? And Bill?
In terms of laying it out there, you know, how we lay it out there is pretty important because everyone's just going to immediately look at that number and look at past year's numbers and stuff. So how, how do we present this in a way that the folks who have come to the meetings know what we're up against versus the people who are just looking at that big number?
Yeah, yeah. Well, what I would, Jeff and I have had conversations, and I know the FFOs had some, but I mean, the way I kind of look at this, the, the theme of this, this budget is, is one where for eight years, we've had increases that have averaged, that bounced between 1.5% up as high as, I think there was a three.
3.3 was on.
And, you know, the average was right around 2.4. And as Eric articulated, what we've been doing is basically going backwards because, because our salary and health insurance costs have gone up substantially.
And other costs as well, not just those.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, yeah. So, but we've also had some savings. And I think Mariana and Jeff and the administrative team have found all places where we've been able to save and, and do some things. I would argue, I would argue that maybe this is a year for correction, or certainly to bring forward to the town that it's time to, time to make an adjustment.
Or take correction.
Or take, yeah, to, to fix things that, that we are clear to fix. So what I would like to do is, I'd like to see all the new things, yeah, I'd like to see, you know, the base budget explained, but I would like to see all the, all of the new things cast in the, in the venue of what are we, what is broken? What are we fixing? So we can explain, here's the data, here's why it's, it's broken, and, and this is the remedy as to how to, how to do it. And it has to kind of pass, really kind of, kind of the way Barry was saying, things in a very broad sense, and kind of the way Jamie was saying too about global language, we have to, we have to basically really have the story saying that, that we believe that this, to fix the problem with our math scores, which are lagging, are lagging, this is the right, this is the right course of action, and it's targeted at, in the elementary school level with, with, with coaches that will, will spend time coaching math teachers. So we spell, we spell each of these items out so it's, so it's clear and it can be articulated. And, and we're fixing, we're also proposing a major fix overhaul with our technology. But we're doing that in a, in a longer term capitalized type of a, of an approach, or that's what we're proposing, so.
And I just, with regards to the math coaches coaching the elementary school teachers, maybe for those who don't know, explain to them that an elementary school teacher is responsible for knowledge in all subject matter. None of them have a math degree, a science degree, an English degree, a social studies degree. They have a broad knowledge of everything. Some of them may be better science teachers, some of them better, may be better math teachers, some may be better language teachers. They may have their strong point, but they are responsible for the entire education system in that one classroom. So they might not be brilliant at math, that's why the math coach is there to help them teach the strategies that will help teach math to the students.
Well said, yeah, yeah. So anyway, so I, I mean, that's what I, that's what I would, would like to see us be, have presented at the public hearing, which is basically, we're proposing adding, you know, we'll go right down the list. Boom, here's the problem statement, this is, this is what we need, this is why we need to fix it, this is the solution, and here's the justification for the solution. You know, and I think that that's, and that was, that was a method that Brian, yeah, Trader had us, had us use last year, which I thought worked very well. And then we'll just lay it all, lay it all out, see, get, get the feedback, and then we'll continue our, our discussions as well. Because it's a, I mean, 5.57 is, is a lot.
Along with that, Tim, and the fact that you mentioned that we've been operating on a deficit for this number of years, we need to emphasize because of that, there's no place for us to look elsewhere within this budget to solve these problems by finding, you know, we've been finding savings for the past eight years because we've been operating at deficit, and there's no more savings to be found, or, you know, I shouldn't say no more, but it's, it's becoming harder and harder each year to find more savings.
Good point. It's well said. But I mean, just case in point, about three, four years ago, we had 16 certified staff retirements. This year, we have 2.5. So usually we could achieve savings through, you know, if you leave, we hire at a lower, you know, obviously a much lower staff. There's no savings in that any longer.
It's really important to get the word out on the public forum to the public hearing because if like 30 people show up, it's, with the conversation with Board of Finance, with us and things like that, having a really small crowd is not going to do any justification in terms of this type of percentage increase if we're going to, you know. It's really, really important to have all sides to master the discussion.
I just give myself a comment.
Barry?
I just think when, you know, that, that will go forward, that, you know, we say, here's our problem, because we're going to do, and when we each the items that we do, math coaches, class sizes, technology, we say, here is the strategy we're implementing, I'm sure it works.
Yep, perfect.
We're just not going to just like, but here's how we're going to do it in a way that we have the best faith that is going to move, you know, that number of students who are achieving their early index.
Right, yeah, yep.
Well said.
Paul?
As a non educator, very interesting discussion, and I really think the definition of the problem has to be clear.
Yeah.
People can under, you, everyone has opinions, and everyone's still going to have opinions, but the clear of the problem can be described, whether it's back to test scores, whether, you know, just to say class size, a lot of people are going to say, what's really the difference between 18 and 22? I don't know, because I'm not an educator, right? So I think it's really clear that for these things, what is the problem that's trying to get fixed? And then a good strategy to get it fixed, and then what happens a year from now?
Right.
How do you go demonstrate that you got the return on that investment that you're asking the taxpayers to make? I've heard something about, a couple of things we've tried before, it hadn't got the results we want. Well, how do you come back and say, we got the bang for the buck that we invested on?
Yep.
So keep that in mind as a, as a way to go forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody, have we had enough discussion on the budget for this session? Everybody good? You know, thumbs up there? Okay, good, all right. We'll move on to our next item, which is, let's see.
Yeah, primary voting day for Niantic Center and Eastlime High School.
So last time we talked about the sighting, we were really all in favor of, at all, of having, you know, using the schools on a day when kids are in session, April 28th is the day. So long story short, as some of my updates, we're mandated by statute. The town says this is where they want to have it, we're mandated to do it. So with that being said, the high school on April 28th, as well as Niantic Center School, would be the two primary locations in addition to the senior center as being the third. So that's three locations across town. High school, we don't have any issues with the south gym. It has an exterior exit and entrance. That's where we plan to have, you know, voting. The one caveat with that is the town is looking at the distance from handicap parking spots to the actual voting, you know, location, has to be a hundred feet or under a hundred feet. So there are handicap parking spots on the backside of the pool.
I was going to say in the pool.
Those are the ones we're using. And I believe just as you were looking at it, it's just less than, you know, a hundred feet to the south gym, so. So just waiting to hear the final word on that. So high school, we should be good. Obviously we have letters ready to go to notify parents, begin to notify parents and we do it over, you know, the course of a couple of different correspondence or series of correspondence. Niantic Center, on the other hand, the plan would be, and Jeff has been great, we've been working together on this. We have not put anything out yet, wanted to bring it here first. Plan would be to do a half day, an early dismissal day at Niantic Center. Kids would still have lunch, but it would do the opportunity to get kids out of that building, you know, sooner. We still get in the regular school day there, even though it's a half day. And we would use the cafeteria, the side entrance of Niantic Center and the cafeteria would be utilized for voting. So nobody would be coming in the front door at Niantic Center. Only just, hold that thought.
We'll get you.
So kids would still eat lunch that day, but it would be a bag lunch. And the bag lunches would go to the classrooms. So, and then they would be dismissed at the regular half day time. After school program would still run as usual. That usually runs in the cafeteria, that would run out of the library, would be the plan there. So we've got a couple of hands, so let me stop there and then we can talk through. Jamie, your first.
Well, you answered my lunch question. I was wondering how they were going to eat lunch if the cafeteria was being used for voting.
Yeah.
So you're saying that voters would come in the side entrance?
Exactly.
And go straight into the cafeteria?
Straight into the cafeteria, right into the cafeteria and then out the same way.
I'm guessing you have security presence at both doors.
Police, police officer. Actually, I've already talked to Chief of Police. And Chief Inglese said they would provide an officer, we would station that officer right there in that hallway so nobody enters the rest of the building from the cafeteria.
And then my second question is, is do we know whether or not we are going to have a primary date yet? Has it been official?
April 28th.
No, I mean, like, is it official that we need a primary date?
Yes.
Okay. For both parties or just one, do we know?
It's just the one.
Good question.
Just the one?
It's just the one.
Just one, I think.
This will come around every four years.
Right, I just didn't know if it was.
Think calendar wise, do you even want to, you know, in four years' time, if this, it, it will work, but we don't want to have school on this day, it adds another day.
So I was completely against this and if there's no way out of it, I guess we have to.
No way.
There's no way out.
I did say that I really didn't vote this at all. So I'm trying to see exactly how this is going to work. So you have voting from six in the morning, eight, six in the morning?
Six to eight, yes.
Six to eight?
Yeah.
And the little ones are going to be coming to school just as normal, so you're going to have buses?
Normal schedule, yep.
You have buses coming in and out of there and everything else.
Nine o'clock and then the half day at twelve, twelve-thirty when they're dismissed. So the twelve-thirty period is going to be quiet, middle of the day is going to be quiet for voting. People are at work. The bigger times are going to be early in the morning. Kids don't arrive until, you know, roughly nine o'clock.
And then the evening.
And then, then the evening time. That's why we want to get them out of there rather than, you know, three very fat quarter to four, get them out of there earlier. We still get the day in, it's just.
So you're betting on like a smaller influx at that time when the kids are in the school?
Exactly. That was the, the idea. But it's a calendar change too, because it's a half day for Niantic Center, hence that's why it's here at the board level.
So my question on this, we're forced by statute, but yet four years ago, we didn't have.
They didn't use.
Four years, we've never been forced by statute, but this is a year we're forced by statute.
They haven't used Niantic Center in years.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I'm probably going to vote no. I just, I, I think it's ridiculous that they're forcing us upon this to, you know.
I agree. Way to Sunday then.
It's the same.
Can I just ask what the, why is it such a hot intent to use the school when you can, you have a firehouse right down the road? I don't understand that.
I don't know. All questions I've asked and have not, that's the one place they want to use and you have no say in the matter and I have no say in the matter.
And it's accessibility to the voting district, but yet we've never had a problem in this town in terms of accessibility to vote, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I, John, I totally agree.
We voted the community center for two districts.
Yeah, we are.
We vote no though if it's a statute or it's going to be used anyways, like.
We can vote no, but nothing's going to happen, right?
Yeah, we're required to, to allow it.
The only, the only thing we're voting on is the half day.
Just the half day. Because it's changed the approved calendar. It's the only thing you're, you're voting on, yeah.
And that's a half, half day on what day?
It'll be April 28th. Now, half day for Niantic Center students only.
Okay.
So it would just be reflected as a Niantic Center student only half day. The other schools will all run a regular schedule.
So in the, in the calendar that you included in the package that's modified, where is the modified?
We didn't put it in yet.
Oh, okay, you modified it, you know, modified it.
I was just showing you what the calendar looks like so you can reference it if you wanted to reference it.
Got it, got it. So, so there would, there, if, if we were to, if, if we were to approve this, then there would be the addition of, of.
It would be reflected as a half day for Niantic Center students only. So we got to make it clear and get that, you know, we'll have that correspondence out starting, you know, by this week. And then continue to overlook.
Is there, are there any other issues than having one of the schools at a half day, the other two?
No, I mean, we've done it before with even closing, like, it was last year or the year before, we closed Flanders. But all the other schools remained open. They lost a day, we're not losing a day here. We lost the high school day when the propane or natural gas line, remember that, three years ago, broke? We're not losing a day, so it's not going to impact the end of the year at all, because it still counts as a regular school day. So it's just a, a half day to try and get kids, you know, out of there sooner.
Okay.
I don't know, Jeff, any thoughts?
I mean, we met with the folks from the voting precinct, they came down, they thought we were supposed to answer a question on the Republican side, they don't, that could be, she did mention that.
Yes, sir.
It could be vote. But they feel strongly they'll need the Democratic primary for sure, on the 28th. We, we tried to troubleshoot it. You know, we talked about a lot of different scenarios, but this seems to, with Chris Erwin being able to do the lunches for us and doing the bag lunch, we felt like that would be the best way to go. And get them out of school before the real influx of people start voting in the afternoon where you have buses and kids and voters all come in, out of the park and all at the same time. So that, that's kind of where we're at right now.
So, yeah. And, and, and then you will collect the, the data, the how, the, the, what, you know, if there are any issues that surface and so on, so that.
In four years' time, yeah, we need to do something different or, or cancel altogether. There's a ton of different, like, Waterford's got the same thing going on, they've got, you know, they're, they're, they've got voting going on in their schools and kids are there as well.
Jeff, maybe even four years from now, maybe if we go to that snow schedule where you take the days off, maybe that's the last day that comes off or whatever, so.
That's a good point.
So I have a logistics question for Jeff. Parent pickup on that day? For those parents who do pickup, are you going to keep the same schedule or, I mean, what would you do?
I'll have to move it out of the cafeteria.
Would you maybe move it to the gym?
And move it to the gymnasium probably.
Just because I know you do pickup in the cafeteria, so.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do that. We would have to move that to a different, either a different room or, or, I use the caf, the gymnasium to, to, to the buses out, but I could probably do that one day, just make that straight.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so it's just proving a modification to the calendar for Niantic Center School only that they would have a half day.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed change to the nineteen, 2019, 2020 calendar for April 28th for Niantic Center School for a half a day, so we can have primary voting in the schools.
A ringing, a ringing second? All seconds, thank you. Any further discussion or agonizing?
You tried.
All, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Oh, do, what, did you?
Can't oppose.
I oppose.
We have one, one opposed. No abstain. You gave?
I gave.
You gave, you gave.
You gave.
Okay. That passes and thanks, and Jeff, thanks, thanks a lot for, for working that out with, with everybody. And Jeff, you too. I mean, I, you did everything.
Start corresponding with parents, just make sure it's clear.
Okay. The next item is discussion, action. Do we need to take action on this? Yeah, I guess so.
We need to.
We need to.
Okay, on the proposed calendar for 2021. Okay, so you have two versions of the calendar for next year in front of you. One, and there's some changes, the calendar looks different already. And what we have is, let me see, where did I put that? The, kind of had an update scenario of, or a cheat sheet. Let me see where's my cheat sheet, here it is. We have a cheat sheet you can kind of use. Here, take this. And you can use this as kind of a guide as to what the changes are. So let's, let's first start with a 182 day calendar, which is what we have now, 182 student days. And by law, we only need 180 just to reference that for the. So 182 day highlights in the proposed calendar, you know, for next year. Teachers still have 189 days, students have 182s, 182. We would have 4.5 professional development days offered. So you can see in the calendar, September, October, February and March. We have a change from this year, we've removed the May PD day. So all PD is completed by April vacation. We got some feedback from the PDAC committee. They really had, they really are the drivers of this calendar, so kudos to them for, for driving this. That's our professional evaluation and development committee. So all PD would be completed then by April vacation. We thought that that would be beneficial, I agree. All schools will have parent conferences on the same days, 1.5 days in the fall and 2.5 days in the spring mandated, you know, by law to offer parent conferences. Now here's a change. You know how in every year in the past, we have just tacked on snow days at the end of the year? So the thought would be, and I got this from some other districts, just go back to including in, I think years ago, maybe it was done here, I don't recall, but building in, you know, some possible inclement weather days. So put three of them in. So let's take February 17th. So if we don't have an inclement weather day up until that point, February 17th, that day would be a day off for kids. If we do have a day, like in November or December, that becomes a school day. So it's, and we do the same thing for the next year. So pretty, pretty straightforward. At least it, it gives us a little bit more stability with the end of the year and, and looking at graduation. And then the last day would be June 17th with 182.
Last year.
So 181. Teachers still have 189 days, students would have the 181. We would have, this is beneficial, we would have 5.5 P days, PD days, which are the days offered for staff. September, October, November, January, February, March. So we're increasing some professional development time for staff. All schools will have parent conferences, the same, 1.5, 2.5. We added that additional PD day in January for our, our staff members. So that's a bonus. Same thing with the included built-in snow and cancellation days. Last day would still be June 17th. And what's not reflected on here is you're going to see a little bit of savings too, because we're not running buses one day for students. So a couple of thousand dollars there. There's some staff savings, less security for professionals, non-certified staff. So I think it was, it adds up to about $12,000 in electricity is another one, because you're not using all your buildings. Add up to be roughly about $12,000 in savings if you went to 181 days too. Helps the budget. So there it is. And Jamie's ready to explode with thoughts, I can see.
I'm going to hold it in.
You're something against the word calendar, don't you? It just doesn't matter.
You're carrying out what else?
Bill?
I just was, you know, it, obviously adding another PD day is, is going to, you know, be able to help Amy and others, especially if we're, if we do implement all of this technology and, and all of that, then I think that that, that would be a great opportunity to get everybody up to speed on, on working with the new, new equipment and so forth. So, and I don't know what other initiatives that are going on that that PD day could, you know. But if we don't have a specific use for that PD day, that we don't see that it's really important, then I think parents are going to say, well, why are you taking, you know, how is that going to benefit my kid by, by taking them out of school one day? But if, if we explain and say, well, the reason we's doing this is because we've got these initiatives and we really don't have time to get the teachers up to speed on it, then, then getting them up to speed is going to benefit their kid. But just to throw that calendar out there, I think it needs some justification, in my opinion.
And the mandated trainings, don't forget too, I know, you do them, you know, in old line, but, you know, you have human trafficking is one that just came out of the books, that we have to provide two and a half hours of, of training in human trafficking to all, all staff. Then we're fresh for, so there's all these mandates, we have hours upon hours of mandated trainings.
People don't realize, yeah.
Through DCF that we're trying to get it all in and done. And we're, we're just, it's, it's just a complete squeeze. Having an extra PD day, I don't want to speak for the PDAC committee, but I think that was the theme that, you know, having that extra time would be beneficial.
Yeah, I just want to name that I'm a huge proponent for additional professional learning for teachers, even if it's not just due to mandated reporting. Like, I know I was spoiled as a teacher and that I got PD weekly. And so even 5.5 days across the entire school year seems insufficient to me. So any plan that allows more professional learning opportunities for teachers and even the opportunity to collaborate across buildings, I'm in favor of.
Eric? So I really like the, the light blue ones, the items, the, where we're identifying where we're taking days if snow, if we have snow days and we're identifying that ahead of time. I, I like that, I've seen that in other districts, I, I like that a lot. I agree, I think the 181 seems right, the extra day of PD makes a lot of sense. My only question on the calendar, I'll go back to the September 4th PD. I thought we had moved it the past few years to like the 21st or something like that. Because what happens is kids go to school for three days, then they go to four days, then have a four day weekend. And it just, I know from a parent perspective, drove me crazy because the kids are starting to get it back into a routine and then they have a four day weekend and they completely get out of a routine again. So is there some reason we pushed it to the 4th? Because it was much better when, I liked it when it was later, because we go three days, then you go kind of full, you have a day off, but you're still four days and staying in routine.
Interestingly enough, we took that, the recommendation from our, like, our parent advisory council. Because parents like that, having, because of what you just said.
Their feedback was the reason.
To have a gradual.
I, from, from a teaching perspective, I love the kind of easing it back into it because the, you know, you've got a whole, it's like getting a train moving, you know, it's, it's, it takes so much energy at the beginning of the year to get your, you know, all your classes, you're starting all these different classes, to, to be able to have a little extra time to prepare or recharge for that next week and then, next week and then go to a full week. I love, our district does the same thing in, in having kind of that three day, four day, five day, get yourself back up to speed. Because the kids, you know, they've just gone from doing whatever they wanted all day long to now being told to sit in one spot all day for so many days in a row. It's not like they just come back to school ready to learn for eight hours, five days in a row. I, I, I mean, I think it's nice, that's my opinion.
Yeah, so when I, again, my kids are now in college, but when, whether my kids and kind of our friends, so my sample size is small, but this was all the same conversation, is they'd go back for three days, kind of get into a routine, then have four, yeah, four days. And then they're off for four days. And four days was enough time that they start hanging out, laying around again and forgetting about, you know, that they're, and then it was kind of a fight to get back in the routine again the following week. You guys are more experienced, I mean, Bill, obviously you're teaching and you can see it, so that's closer. So my sample size is small, but I know for myself and the people. So, my sample size is small, but I know for myself and the people that I talked to hated the four-day weekend. But if that's what people want, that's fine. My kids are in college, I, I, you know, maybe I'm, maybe it was just my, you know, our small sample size, um, and that's fine. So, if that's, that's the case and that's what people want, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I'm surprised, I guess.
I think too, from a teacher's standpoint, as far as professional learning, because of the way that our PD rolls out, we have that half-day PD on the 24th. That's the teacher's first day back.
Right.
So, you're basically getting opening ceremony, and then you can move them into new learning, but there's only so much new learning you're getting on that day, because that's the first day back. So, really, on that September 4th day, that is the first full day of any new learning for the start of the school year, but they've already actually had students. So, as far as from a mandated training day, when we have requirements that we have to do, we either have to do it on that September 4th, or that October 9th, or else we're getting way too late into the school year. Now, we're, we could be a month in for some of those mandated trainings, uh, we can't let go that far. So, we sort of need that PD day earlier, because I, I'm with you. I mean, I'm from sort of districts where I had five days before the kids even came and five days more during the school year. So, to have five and a half days all year is, is tight.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree, and those first few days are always, you know, getting your classroom, get ready, looking at your class list, making sure your plies are in place, doing all that, and, and in some cases, doing some of those training videos on those early days and, and more administrative stuff. And then, once you've had the kids for a few days, now you're, all right, you're all settled, now you get ready, teach me, uh, some new technology or something that's going to be useful that I can use. So, I think that, that PD day is probably, probably one of the more productive ones, I would think. Because you're not just thinking about your classroom, you're thinking about what am I going to do to help my kids for the year at that point.
All right, so I'm going to put on my two hats. My board hat and my parent hat. So, I have one question to start. Why is August 21st not a staff day? 21st.
21st is new staff.
20th is a pink day and the 21st is a white day.
You don't bring staff back for much longer.
I don't know why we, yeah, we bring people back for one day and then.
Let them go and then come back again on Monday? That's my question.
Yeah.
Wait, on the 20th?
21st.
On the 20th, you have a staff day.
That's new staff day.
New staff orientation.
Only new staff.
So, why don't you arrange them on the 21st?
Well, that's a small, very small population.
I'm just curious as to why they're coming back to. I'm just, it's a question.
To be honest with you, because at the end of that orient, so the way that I run that orientation day is basically I have it where they leave me having logged into every single system that they need to be successful on their first day, and then I hand them over to the building administration, who normally shows them where their room is, talks them through, and that, it's sort of like a courtesy, if you will, where we give them that one day to say, hey, listen, if you need to come back in, take care of your classroom, do whatever it is that you need to do, we sort of give them that buffer day, if you will. It's not mandated.
No, that's, I just.
It gives a little bit of a buffer.
It's put out to me as, as an anomaly.
Yeah.
So, then, my next question slash statement is, is when I came to the board 13 years ago, we were told that our calendar is 182 days because we get more money. And I've had conversations with Mariana about it, and that's a no.
We found out that wasn't true.
We found out that's not true. So, we don't get more money.
You may, it used to happen.
It used to, but we don't, it's not, it's something that's anymore. We don't get more money anymore for going to school more days. So, we no longer need to do the 182. So, that's why you gave us the 181. Just where we're getting to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, then, as a parent, I love the across-the-district parent-teacher conferences, because we've been lacking heavily the parent-teacher conferences at the high school level. So, I'm hoping that this means that we're actually going to really have conferences at the high school now? Because it's just been, what, parent night and by appointment?
So, one of the things, uh, inequities, if you will, was that we had a heavy conversation in regards to conferences and about the role of the fall conferences and that needed. That's a relationship-building opportunity for us with parents, confidence builder for parents and staff, and we sort of committed to the fact that if we're going to do conferences, we're going to do conferences. Elementary, middle, high. And at the same time, I think it's important is during that time, especially at the secondary level, that might also be opportunities when you might be having some of those meetings that you need to have multiple teachers available at, that you're having a hard time scheduling, or you need to have multiple services available, that's a good opportunity, a window for those meetings to occur.
Because I know as a parent, I have found it is heartbreaking that you really willing to meet with a teacher if you make an appointment during the daytime to meet with them.
Right.
So, I like seeing that now they are included.
Yes.
In the conferences then.
Yep, yep. We made it all the same.
So, as a, so my problem is, is all the days off right before a four-day weekend, to make sense.
Yeah, we block them up against long weekends.
As, as a parent who works, it is impossible to take off a day before a holiday, because you're taking off the Friday now to take care of your kids if you don't have childcare and you have the weekend and then you have a holiday. It's really, really hard for working parents to take off all of those extra days from work. Um, and I don't, I have a question about April vacation. Whose idea was it to have Good Friday off and then come back to school for a week and then have a week off?
That's a good question.
Because I, I'm curious as to why it doesn't buffer Good Friday and Easter? Why does it come back another week?
I think regionally, the thought, and I know we don't have a regional calendar anymore, but, um, to have April vacation.
Because it would make a lot more sense if you had Good Friday, Saturday, Easter, and then the week off, because we built in all these extra days for Christmas and Thanksgiving, so parents and teachers could get where they need to go, but for Easter, we don't give them that opportunity.
Yeah, that's a long stretch though.
And then my next one is, is has the state given up with any kind of guideline yet with regards to Columbus Day?
Not to my knowledge, no. I haven't heard anything.
Nothing?
No changes that, uh, I don't know if there's anything legislatively that's out there.
About last session.
Yeah.
So, we are still a Columbus Day school?
That is, um, I'm, I just looked up the, that Learn Regional Calendar. It is that Good Friday with a week.
I just think it would make more sense for families and teachers, because I don't know how many absences.
It's like ours.
Yeah, it's like ours.
I don't know how many absences you're going to have on the Monday after Easter with traveling families and being out extra students that week of April.
Bill, Amy, what, um, you said the regional calendar.
The regional match is ours.
The regional match is ours, where they have Good Friday, they come back for a week. Yeah, for 20, yeah, for 2021.
I'm just thinking you're going to have a lot of absences the week of April 5th through 9th, and all the families taking advantage of Good Friday and Easter break, and then they're going to have a second week off, because it's now a week off from school. Because I know a lot of families, they do their vacation around Easter break. And I do like that we've built in snow days. I think it's a great idea.
That was clear. Well, Jeff? Well, we're, we're sharing two. Um, you know, we're recommending, uh, the 181, um, I guess since there's some benefits in the PD offerings, um, that we will have, and, uh, there is a little bit of savings as well, uh, but more around the, you know, the, the PD opportunity that we can provide. We just, we need that time to give to our staff, so, and that was the recommendation.
Are we going to make a vote on these tonight?
I say we do.
Yeah, we, we really do, because it's, it's already later than normal.
So, can I, uh?
Go for it, Bill.
Yeah. So, I'd like to, to make a motion to adopt the 181-day calendar, where students have 181 days, teachers still do 189 days with 5.5 PD days.
I will second.
Good.
You have a motion on the table?
I second.
Yeah.
Yep. No, we're all, yeah. So, anybody have any comments?
Any more?
I'm with Jamie also on removing that week of, April.
He agrees with me on April vacation.
But that creates the difficulty of that it's different than other districts. I, I also think that Jeff's point of the long stretch between, um, the 12th all the way till.
End of May.
End of May is a long road to go without any breaks.
Not to mention every staff member that has kids or lives in the area now has a different vacation than, you know. I know, it impacts everybody in some different way, but both positive and negative, but you're really throwing a monkey wrench into some staff too.
Yeah, I would say that, yeah, that's a big deal.
Is there a, is there a way to lobby, not, I mean, not for this year, but in the future? How, can, can Jamie, who's our calendar expert, can she cut, reach out to Learn? Like, is there a connection to the, who, who manages the?
We do, yeah, we do that. We work with Learn, we, at our superintendent, our superintendent, so we bring it on the table, we talk about it. It used to be much more when it was, you know, we had a regional state calendar.
Yeah.
So, Jamie needs to lobby you earlier.
She does.
She does, yeah.
That's fact, Jamie.
Everybody knows how we bring up retirement, everyone.
Jamie, Jeff, calendar can be there.
What happens if we're out of step with the regional calendar?
We don't have to be in step.
Nothing.
Nothing, nothing, because they, right, there was.
There's no.
There's no penalty.
No, there's no penalty, but, you know, spring sports are impacted, as, as Jeff said, you know, staff members whose kids are in the neighboring town are impacted, so, um, I think it's a kind thing to do for our staff to, to be. Yes.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Okay, so, we're not amending the motion.
Excuse me, sorry.
You guys are not, you're not, you're not offering amendment to the motion, so, okay. So, any other discussion? Okay, is everybody ready to vote? Hey, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Two, two opposed? And abstentions? No abstentions, so, uh, what's that, nine, I don't know, seven, two.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good. And good discussion, as always. That is it for our discussion action items for the evening. That brings us into administration reports. Jeff?
Um, yeah, a couple quick, uh, um, so, another, uh, with inclement weather, um, there's a lot, and some districts have already moved forward with it and sent out letters about doing a three-hour delay rather than a two-hour delay. This is not something the board, you know, you need to vote on, there's nothing in, in policy, um, that states, you know, what, what we do, but, um, you know, we don't want to necessarily be the only one stuck. We try and always go in a unified front, but, um, so we're, we're looking at that. I checked with, uh, all the schools. We can schedule-wise do a three-hour delay if necessary. We really would have saved two days so far this year if we had a three-hour delay, um, but, uh, you know, I don't, we don't plan on using it, you know, this year, I'm thinking more for next year. Um, I'm talking to Joe Nofrio today with Salem as well, he was going to mention it at his board meeting this evening, um, too, but, uh, it is an option, um, and it could help us out, we're, we're talking more than so. We are looking at that, um, we will do a little bit more work on it, but maybe correspond with parents, um, moving forward, saying this is something, you know, we're starting to think about for, you know, for next, uh, next year. And maybe we do, if it, if we don't get any negative feedback, maybe we do use it once this year, if, if absolutely necessary. So, just want to put that out there.
But you still have the two-hour lever.
We still have the day, we're not changing, yeah, we still have the two, we have a three now, and then we would have, uh, obviously, a cancellation or an early dismissal. But I become more of a weatherman now, because now I'm deciding, okay, so, two-hour, three-hour, you know, I, I don't know, but, um, at least, we're, you know.
Get more letters from parents saying you made the wrong call.
Exactly. So, it was, but that's, that's where we're at with the, the idea of a three-hour delay. Communication plan, communication committee, um, so we're filling and populating that, so thanks to our board members who take part. We're tentatively looking at the 24th, I think, of February?
Yeah, we're going.
Okay, all right, so we got a potential group FFO, which we'll try and do earlier. So, I think we're going to stick with that date then, the 24th of February. We've got one high school student locked in, we've got our parent locked in, Ryan Trader's going to be the parent, um, and then we're working on, you know, except for just a couple staff members, we'll be good to go. So, uh, that'll be our first committee meeting, I'm excited about that. 2:10, February 10th, next Monday, uh, offering a school visit. We have five of you as board members that are able to attend that. Sure, if it'd be five or four, but, um, I know there's a handful that can't, so we'll look at maybe another date to do, you know, another offering, that, that might work for those that, that can't make it. So, that's definitely in play, excited about that. Start at the high school and go to the middle school, and then go down to Little Beans. So, uh, we'll map that out for you as we move a little bit closer. Tim and I will be at the February 12th Board of Finance meeting. We need to get back on our schedule, um, trying to get it to a couple Board of Finance meetings, um, looking at, trying to do maybe three a year, um, rather than every single month. Thinking rather around focusing on budget, sort of thing. So, um, I've had some discussions with various people about that, uh, three to four, I think would be the best, best scenario, so, we can talk further about that, uh, if necessary. And just lastly, real quick, um, great representation, um, at our, you know, we had a mental health forum on suicide awareness, Jordan Burnham. Thank you to Paul and, and Ann for being there, President Dago Foundation. You know, we had close to 100 community members.
That's great.
Between Waterford, Eastlime, uh, that were part of that. Kate, thank you for coming too.
I think we had more than 100.
We, we might have. I, I, you kind of did account, I think, and it was.
For sure.
Maybe around, yeah, around 100. Yeah.
And Deb had said that the kids received it very well too.
My son came home very impressed. He spoke to me for half an hour about it.
Oh, wow.
Excellent.
Well, that's good.
We have another parent that came up to Jordan that night, right at six o'clock when they got there and said, my child said you were just, you were great, so, um, it really had a, a strong message, so, um, we were, we were happy with that.
Did that notice for all the parents? At both schools?
Yeah, we sent it, yep, between both schools. So, we got another one planned for May, um, so we're working on that.
Great.
Well, it went out District Y. I mean, it went out District Y.
District Y, uh, we sent it to the PTA presidents, uh, yeah, we, we tried to get it out. One thing we didn't, we think more of was maybe in the paper, just because of the cost, we didn't put it out into the, the paper, but that might be something.
You should come to the Dago Foundation for that if you need help.
That's, yeah, you're, that's good.
We'll help you advertise it.
I have a question about that, because those kinds of things are rarely fill the auditorium. They should, but they don't. And I was tempted almost send to some of, you know, the, to the, my staff, the O-line being like, you should really go to this thing, you know what I'm, but I'm thinking, why don't we do, that would be a great thing to do collectively, right?
I mean, yep.
Talked about that.
Oh, it was with out there?
It was, it was with Waterford.
But to tie in other districts, I actually thought about reaching out to.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't notice that part of it.
I actually think that that is one of the, the biggest reasons that we did have more of a turnout. I mean, we did, we did advertise it a lot, but I think that that collaborative was very, very important. I met, I know.
Because you don't, you know, if you get somebody good like that, you know, that's-
Jeff, you've been to ours. We've had four or five mental health forums since we lost Brian, and you had double, if not more than that, of the attendance we have at ours. And so getting the word out is the way to go, and sharing it with other communities is-
Standing, too.
The more people you get, the better return you get on the investment, even if it's not into-
We're also going to be doing a week, right?
Yeah, we're doing, in May 18th through the 22nd will be, May is mental health awareness month. So we've got a dynamic speaker who actually spoke right after Jordan spoke that I saw, so we locked both of them in, so for May, so May 18th, he's coming down. John Broderick, who was a former chief justice from New Hampshire who had an incident with his son. So, yeah, so we'll lock in other, we'll start reaching out to other, other people around here. I already have Waterford, discussions are done about it. That's it, that's it, thanks. Amy? How you doing over there?
I'm all right. All right.
I was 3:06 over there.
Mariana and Kim and I have acquired the flu over the past week, so we have gone down one at a time in our office and successfully fighting it every day. I guess for me, the big news is that next meeting, I'll be coming back with the five literacy staff.
Yeah.
And be presenting to you in regards to K-12 literacy here in Eastlime, and sort of some of the ways that we help support the growth of our literate students, some of the things that we're working on currently, and some of the future work that we know that we have. So I'll be sharing that with you. And then after that, I believe I'll be coming to you with the Next Generation Accountability Index, which I included in my minutes to the day article in regards to Niantic Center, so that you could see what was referenced earlier, as well as our EdSite indicator report that came out this weekend. It's funny, you can't even get on EdSite right now because so many people are on there.
Oh, sure.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, so I know I'm coming back to you with that presentation, and then I'm also, we'll be coming back to you with world language presentations, so I'll be sort of, probably be hitting you for your meetings in a row, it looks like, with follow-up, so. But just get my feedback underneath me. Today's my first official day back, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mariana's not supposed to be here.
Yeah.
Anything to add? Okay.
Don't breathe.
Yeah, don't breathe. We go out and wash our hands. Yeah. Committee reports, we did have, there was a policy committee meeting.
So we had a policy committee meeting. It was a very short one, we did really good.
It's at 5:00?
It was at 5:00. So we had a policy committee meeting at 5:00. We did one, two, three, four, five, six, seven policies in 40 minutes. We were quick and efficient today. So we talked about the sex abuse neglect of children by school employees. We had concerns about language at the last policy meeting, that the language is statutory, so it has to stay in, and it will be coming back at our next meeting. That one, and the sex abuse neglect for children on the autism spectrum disorder, that also the language in there has to stay in because it is statutory. That will also be coming back to the next meeting. We do have a new policy, 5141, that the state put together this year that we need to get into place, and it's application of sunscreen in schools by children six and over. That will be coming back for, to the next meeting for a first reading. The state, in its wisdom, has decided that children at six should be able to apply their own sunscreen. I don't know what they were thinking, but I don't know if I let my six-year-old apply her own sunscreen. But it's a policy, so we have to enact it. The next one is policy 9,000, which is the role of the board member. We're going to make a couple, just little tweaks on it and bring it back to policy for another review. And then policy 9010, limits of authority. We have some tweaks that we want to make, but we need to fix the limits on it first. And then policy 9012, legal responsibilities of the board of education are going to eliminate because everything in it is covered in the limits of authority. And then policy 9271B, code of ethics. We are going to keep it, and we're going to add a new code of conduct policy, which is 9272. And that was it for all of our policy that we talked about. Moving forward to the homework discussion at the AAA meeting, and we cannot wait to see.
Okay, good. Okay, um, board comments? Any comments?
We got our hand up. Where are we?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'd be interested to see, to follow up on Bonnie's comment during a public comment earlier. I'd be curious to see the average caseload for our special ed teachers in an upcoming meeting or update.
Okay, good. Jamie?
I have a lot, so if somebody wants to go before me.
I'll go ahead. I was just going to say, I was right on the same page. Just, not just our caseload, but also kind of what other districts do. Are there guidelines in place? I think we're one of the first, actually, that put a class size guideline in place, but I am curious to kind of see what that looks like, because I do think that they might be overloaded.
Okay.
Okay, so I am thanking everyone who has supported the Miracle League. In case you do not know, we signed our contract today to, with our contractor, and digging will start in March. So we're very excited. We work really, really hard. We're not done. We still need funds, we still are fundraising, we still have more parts of the project, like a playground, that we want to get done, so please keep supporting the Miracle League. My second thing is, is I want to thank the district of Waterford and Eastlime for bringing Jordan to the town, both sets of students and parents. He's a great speech, if you didn't make it, look him up. He's an incredible speaker. He was incredible. And then my last one is thank you to the Board of Finance. I only, you're the only one left, but I did see three of you out there tonight, and I say thank you for coming. I appreciate it, because it helps us to explain it to you when you've heard us talk about it beforehand. So thank you for coming.
Good, very good. Barry?
When I was going through all this review of getting it right, one of the things particularly related to the issue of coaching, the idea of professional development, you know, was woven into that. And like all the other factors, professional development is a good thing when it's done optimally. And it's, the effectiveness is, it's all over the map. And the consistent thing that showed up on that was that when it's, you could take the phrase we used here, getting it right, when professional development in a district is focused on singularities such as getting it right, it's most effective. So, in a future board meeting, a policy issue, we're going to maybe just talk about, you know, policies on professional development and how it is linked to getting it right, or what are the valuable feedbacks we have on professional development slinked with the hands of student achievement.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other comments? Okay. Other comment? Camille?
I just want to thank all of you.
Uh, see, I'm sorry.
Oh, Camille Alberti, 7 Daris Court.
Thank, thank you.
Board of Finance. I just want to thank you. I know your job is very difficult. I appreciate your advocating for the children and all of the services that you need. I did learn a lot tonight, so I am very thankful that I came and I was able to do that. I heard lots of good comments, particularly, Barry, I like the comment that you were making about if you're going to implement a program, let's make sure you have a successful strategy to move that forward. But then I would come full circle, and I would say, after funds are approved, after the program is implemented, then perhaps, how about some metric reporting? How successful was that program? If you could come back to the taxpayers and the citizens and saying, well, yes, we spent $200,000 on this initiative, but here's the great progress that we made. That goes a long way towards the next time you're coming around asking for more money for another program. And let me give you a specific, a couple of specific examples of, I was just thinking of as I was sitting there. I was a big proponent, supporter of full-day kindergarten. It got funded, it's been in operation for several years, but, and maybe I'm just out of the loop, I don't know, but I don't know the successes that we're having with the full-day kindergarten. So, so what are they? Are, are the scores increasing in the elementary schools as a result of that? That, that kind of data would be helpful. Let's see, I have a couple more comments. Yeah, just, just metrics reporting back. If, if you're going to come forward and ask for new initiatives, such as, I'll use this as one example, the math coaches. So it would go a lot further, rather than just hearing, we need math coaches because other districts in our, you know, in our Derg have them, and they've been very successful with it. If you could take that a step further and, and provide some metrics or examples of how were the scores improved as a result of implementing that program? And maybe set a goal, that's what we're going to achieve, you know, after one year of having that program implemented, here's the scores that we're going to target, and then report back on that. Because a lot of times, we feel a lot, we, me, I'll just use me as an example. I do feel like we, we try to fund certain initiatives, but we just don't know how they're doing in the long run. We fund, 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 and then there's no closing the loop as to how we're doing with that. So I think I heard tonight, Mr. Newton's budget was increased to 5.57%. I understand the strategy of just putting it all on the table and seeing how that will play out. But I did hear today that the general government budget will also increase by around 5%. And so I think it's important to realize that that doesn't translate into a 5% increase in your taxes or the taxpayers' rate that they're going to pay. Because the other, the other side of the equation to expenses are how are we going to, how are we going to pay for those expenses? And we're, we're just not getting the revenues in. So I know, I heard tonight that our town is growing, we've got, we're going to get an increased grant list. I, I don't see that yet. I see Costco bringing in maybe $350,000 this year in increased revenues. If that is offset by decreased education cost sharing, you know, we're not looking at enough revenues to fund everything that's being proposed between the Board of Education and the general government. So the only place left to get that is from the taxpayers. And so if you're looking at, I don't know, I'm guessing a $3,750,000 increase in your school budget, and the town's looking for $800,000 to another million, right? Now we're looking at some pretty substantial increase. Perhaps we're looking at a two-mil increase in our taxes. So if our mil rate is 28 right now, it could go up to 30. I don't think that's going to fly. Even if the Board of Finance were to put it out to the taxpayers and vote, I just don't think that's going to work, because it's going to translate, not to a 5% increase in taxes, but more in line with a 7% or 8% increase in taxes. So I'm not asking you to change anything. If that is your strategy to go forward and present what you've been working very hard on, I encourage you to do that. But at the same time, I ask you to have that realistic expectation that it's probably not going to work. So I'm very pleased to see that you've actually prioritized some of these initiatives. You know, that's a good thing to keep in mind. And I want you to think about, if we are faced with a reduction in, in the proposed increase, each one of you should be thinking about, you know, what, what moves forward and what doesn't. So again, thank you. I know you don't have an easy job. I'm glad to see the Board of Finance isn't the only board whose meetings run into the marathon status, but that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Camille.
Thanks, Camille. Very good. Anybody else like to address the board? Okay, yes. John seconds it. All the pair? Don't do this.